I call to order the meeting of the Cleveland Heights University Heights City School District Board of Education meeting for September 24th. Today is a work session. Mr. Gaynor, will you call the roll?
Mr. Heinz.
Here.
Ms. Lewis. Ms. Sereni.
Here.
Mr. Trimble.
Here.
Ms. Crenshaw.
Here.
I just want for the record to reflect that Ms. Lewis is traveling, so she's unable to be with us this evening. The first item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to consider the consent agenda?
I motion we consider the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments on the consent agenda?
You know, one of the things that Scott and I were just talking about briefly, Mr. Gaynor and I were just talking about briefly, is we have some scholarships that have been in the care of Cleveland Heights High School. And we are trying to move them over to the Heights Schools Foundation, which is just in a better position. This is sort of what they do. And so tonight, we are happily transferring one of those scholarships over from Heights High to the Heights Schools Foundation. This is just really very good work. This is, tonight, we're talking about the Robert Solt Scholarship Fund, which endows a scholarship to a Heights High graduate each year. And so we're very grateful to have the Heights Schools Foundation. The fiduciary for the Heights Schools Foundation is the Cleveland Foundation, and as we all know, that is the gold standard. So this is, this is real progress.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments.
I'll just comment and say I was really excited to see all of the supplementals. I think that just goes to show all of the amazing opportunities that students have to participate in different activities.
All right. Sorry about that.
Every dog within three miles is driving away right now.
Gabe, did you have any other comments?
No, no, just that.
Okay.
Oh, I was gonna say, just tagging on to that, I love reading through all the things going on at all the different, in all the different buildings. And also, not just the opportunities that the students have, all the different ways that teachers get involved outside of their normal classroom duties, I think is something that we should always celebrate. And I had one other thing, but I didn't know if you had anything to say about that.
I just had one other comment about the consent agenda. I wanted to point out to the other board members that the OSBA Capital Conference delegate appointment for our new board members, typically, the president is always our delegate and the vice president is always our alternate delegate. However, if anyone wanted to arm wrestle me for that and be our delegate, I would be willing to have that conversation. But if you don't, I will happily serve as our delegate at the annual business meeting at Capital Conference.
It tends to be a long afternoon meeting that results in somebody rather annoyed.
And exhausted.
Yes. So thank you for your willingness to serve as the board president and to serve as our delegate to the Cap Conference afternoon of rigmarole.
Thank you. And Phil, you had another comment?
Yeah, the permanent appropriations, that's under consent, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Is there anything, Scott, in there interesting that you'd like to call out?
No. In fact, if you were to look back at the permanent versus the temporary, you'll see they're very similar. And the general fund is exactly the same. So a couple of the grants shifted slightly, but we try to have the numbers just about as good as they can be when you approve the temporaries. But the permanent is that extra last statutory requirement that you have to do. So, but a good question, yeah, there's only, only a couple of grants shifted while that's it.
Cool. Thank you.
So if there's no further comments on the consent agenda, Mr. Gaynor, will you call the roll?
Mr. Heinz.
Yes.
Ms. Sereni.
Yes.
Mr. Trimble.
Yes.
Ms. Crenshaw.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. The next item on our agenda is a Severance Development Project. And I'm very pleased that this evening, we have with us Mr. Ryan Porter, who is from Impact, the developer, and also, we have Eric Zamp, who is the Director of Planning and Development for the City of Cleveland Heights. Mr. Zamp, if you will also come up to speak in the microphone. This resulted from a meeting that Mr. Zamp reached out to me and Malia and asked if we would be willing to come to City Hall and hear about the Severance Town Center Project and to have a discussion, just to get the school board involved early in this economic development opportunity. And after we had the conversation, I said, you really need to bring Mr. Porter to one of our board meetings to update the rest of the board and as well as the rest of the community. We know a lot of people watch these meetings, so I'm delighted that you both could be here this evening. So thank you, and I will turn it over to you to go ahead and make your presentation.
And thank you all for having us here tonight. We really think this is a great opportunity for the city, for the cities, and for the district. And I'm gonna be really short here because tonight, it's really about meeting Ryan. And this is a person that hopefully, you're gonna see a lot of. But I think at the suggestion of a former board member and now councilman in Cleveland Heights, we had the meeting and we met with the idea of having early and often conversations with the district, not just because of potentially financial incentives, but because this is a project that would directly impact the district. And there's some district property right adjacent to it and maybe even could be part of this overall vision that we want to have here. So we wanted to start that conversation with you and keep it at a high level, but keep engaged as we get further and further into the more granular aspects of it. So with that, I'll introduce Ryan Porter, and we'll take it from here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you to the board and for everybody who's here and listening tonight. Again, I'm Ryan Porter with Impact Collective. I'm one of the partners. We are a firm actually based in New York, so this is my first foray into the Ohio market. I'm really excited to be here. I thank you all for having me. I know Eric from a prior life on the East Coast, so you know, it was, it was great to be able to connect with him about a year ago and talk about the opportunity here in the Ohio region and Severance and Cleveland Heights. So I'm gonna tell you a little bit kind of about our firm and how we work. We are a process before plan firm, so process is super important to us. And meeting people, learning people, earning trust is probably half of my job. And it's not easy, and I don't expect it after one meeting, not even two meetings, after several meetings. But you know, I'm here to try to start that process of earning trust with this community. But you know, we are developers, but economic developers at heart. And throughout our careers, we've proven and shown that the combination of good land use policy driven by partnership between the public sector and the private sector can lead to economic development, right? So typically, you see developers, they come into communities and they say, this is the widget I built. Take my widget or leave my widget, you know? That kind of approach, that's not how we believe development should be done. And you know, kind of learning how this community lives, what this community needs, is a huge piece of our process that I'm in the middle of right now. And this is just one step in that piece of the process. But ultimately, if you can work with community members to craft land use policy that brings forth new development in a manner in which it serves the needs of the community, but also has financial feasibility, everybody can kind of win, right? Versus kind of, this is what I do, take it or leave it approach, right? Our firm, you know, has again primarily been working on the East Coast, but we've been part of the redevelopment of multiple cities on the East Coast. I'll talk a little bit about it's the City of New Rochelle because it's our largest project. And it's just one that you can kind of read about and learn about what we've done there and what's been happening there very easily. But we are involved in multiple communities and have been doing this as a team for about 15 years as a team. So all of us have many more years of that of experience in real estate, but we've kind of put this team together over the last 15 years under multiple different partnerships. Impact itself as an entity was actually just started in 2019 because our prior partnership called Renaissance, we had a bunch of partners that were in their 60s, 70s, and 80s, and they were ready to slow down. And you know, kind of the partnership side that was in its 40s and 50s was ready to speed up. So that's kind of what brings the Impact name to the, to the equation. But again, development, community engagement, infrastructure, zoning is a big piece. Land use and zoning and kind of crafting that appropriately is a big piece of the equation. Some of the projects that were involved in are listed here, again, from New Rochelle to the Village of Hempstead, Huntington Station, Mineola, a lot of places in New York that you may or may not have heard of. A lot of piece of this is like kind of raising state and federal dollars for these projects, right? To help bring kind of attention to the communities in which we work because you know, there's needs, right? And there's always needs. And we believe that if we're all kind of mushing in the same direction, that attention will be given, right? If you know, federal and state folks look over at us and see we're all fighting, they don't really want to be a part of that, obviously, which makes sense. So we're gonna do our best to try to be, you know, in lockstep in collaboration with this community. This is again, kind of the City of New Rochelle, and these are kind of examples of basically surface parking lots that were underutilized in the City of New Rochelle. And now, there are buildings on these parking lots, right? So that was a huge piece of this product process. And it has driven 30-plus projects in the City of New Rochelle. The City of New Rochelle is in the best fiscal position in the history of the city. They have, you know, some of the most progressive equitable programs going on. Since we ended our master developer position there as a for-profit developer and partner with the city, our firm has actually been hired back over the last two years by the City of New Rochelle as a consultant that works with them on new efforts. Everything from kind of retail efforts to rezoning other areas of their city. So you know, it was such a successful relationship that it continued even after our tenure as developer ended. So it's really kind of a testament to that, and we hope to kind of carry that forward in all the communities in which we work. Again, this process before plan approach really starts with this engagement and discovery process. So I have been, you know, today, I, you know, spent my day meeting with, you know, community members, you know, I've probably heard of SAG and Future Heights and some of those groups that I've had multiple meetings with. I met with Metro Health today. I had a developer that I'm, you know, a colleague of mine fly in from New York to look at some and stuff here. So you know, it's just a wide range of folks that we meet with throughout this process. And I'm really excited to be here, obviously, to meet with the school board and to kind of start digging in and get granular with how the school district works. Because you know, one of the things that we do is really look at how, whatever gets proposed here over this period of time between our efforts with the community, how that will impact the schools, right? How will it impact the water? How it'll impact the sewers? How it'll impact the traffic, right? Looking at it regionally, not just looking at it as Severance as a site, because Severance is just part of an ecosystem, right? Severance is part of the ecosystem of the city, which is part of the ecosystem of the county and this region, right? So we like to look at things really holistically and understand what's going on around us so that we're making the right decisions, right? If we look at ourselves as an island, just doing our development and our thing, then we're not really doing a service to what's happening elsewhere and how the compounding impacts may be good or bad for the areas in which we're working, right? So in New York State, they have this thing called a seeker process, which they have in New York and California, that's like, they make you do this very granular analysis. They don't have that here in Ohio, but we'd like to bring that kind of level of sensitivity to this project still. Zoning flexibility, market flexibility. So one of the things that we do, if you understand zoning or don't understand zoning, is we try to create zoning that's called form-based zoning, which is very flexible zoning, right? Which means that we figure out what's gonna go in the box. We measure, like I said, the impacts of all those items. We agree that should go into the box and the maximum amount of those items. But we try to make the zoning so that it's flexible, so anybody could build anything that we establish that can go in the box at any time, anywhere within that area, right? Because markets are dynamic, right? One year, someone might want to do hotels because hotel financing might be great and the hotel market is needing something. Sometimes you might, might be housing. Sometimes it might be retail, right? But what often stymies developments and costs them 10, 20, 30 years is zoning that is very Euclidean in nature and set in stone, where the market will shift and the zoning can't shift with it, and the economics are just not there to develop that, right? So trying to be flexible but thoughtful is the way in which we craft our zoning. It also leads to expedited approvals and predictability. So other investors and sponsors and developers that come in to play the game that we've all set up the rules to together, they understand what they're getting involved in, right? They know the rules of the road up front. They know what they have to pay into. They understand the impacts already, right? So they're not fighting individually for each individual development. It's really kind of that comprehensive look at things. But we're also making sure there's market feasibility the whole way. Because the worst thing in the world you want to do is get everybody excited about something, you know, come up with a plan, and then it sits on a shelf and collects dust thicker than the plan because it's just not feasible or buildable, right? So we want to be honest with ourselves and everybody along the way as to what's feasible. And if something is something that, if there's something that the community wants that's not feasible, how do we make it feasible, right? Whether that be through subsidy or be combining two uses that can work together, right? That also obviously attracts dollars. So my relationship with NAMDAR, I think is important to talk about. NAMDAR is the owner of the mall property. They don't have the best reputation in this community. It was not possible after my discussions with them that we, in my estimation, that we were gonna come to an arrangement where I was gonna buy them out, right? They were up here, I was down here with valuation, I don't understand this place. So what I was able to do was convince them that they should give me a period of time, I have 20 months, which is now 17, in which I have to spend my own money and my own risk and my own time working with this city and this community to rezone this site, right? To get it set up for new development, right? In that period of time, as long as what I have envisioned gets approved and it makes the value of what we're gonna call the first phase, which is the first half of the property, worth a certain dollar amount that we've agreed to, then they are forced to put the land into the development in phases, right? So I've got a goal. We've agreed upon that goal. I'm running the show on this development process, redevelopment process till that timeframe is up. They are not developers by trade, right? They are, you know, property owners and managers, right? This is what they do, right? They buy defunct malls and then kind of pull apart the pieces and try to sell them for a profit. That's not what I think the city wants, right? And not what I think the city wants to see. So they, so we work together, NAMDAR and I, to come up with an arrangement that can hopefully get us all to where we want to get to. But that's how we're working this deal, and that's the only way that I see this deal as feasible. I haven't even kind of gotten to the point where I trust them or they trust me, but we've got a deal in paper and it's written and signed, right? So we're working towards that every day. And the same way that I'm working towards it with you all. This is my exhausting schedule, which you can't read and we won't go over, but basically, I'm in that first tranche up there of discovery, and there's all these groups that I'm meeting with, you know, city leadership, city boards and commissions, all the city staff, community meetings, school districts on there, the county, the state, the transit authorities, higher education facility, institutions, right? So all these folks that I need to learn from and glean from and figure out whether we can work together, right? And how we can work together. So that's the process that I'm going through right now. And by the end of this year, I will have exhausted, hopefully, the first stage in that process. My community engagement process and this crowdsourcing and this crowd effort will never end, right? If I'm successful, you will know me for 20 years. And we'll be working together for 20 years because there'll be multiple phases of development throughout this whole thing. So you know, that's the reality of the whole thing. But the community engagement never stops. But my initial discovery process is targeted for the end of this year. And then we'll be publishing what we call our RAP, which is our Recommended Action Plan for the Next Steps, which will surmise everything that I've learned and how we believe the next steps forward should go. And then the year of 2025, hopefully, we're all getting along, will be the process and the timeframe by which we will look to rezone the site, right? Write a new zoning code, figure out the uses, figure out the intensity of the uses, study the impacts of those intensities. All that stuff will be done during the 2025 calendar year. Again, I kind of mentioned to you that the first phase of this project will be focused on kind of half the site. We know that, you know, the Home Depot and the Daves aren't going anywhere for quite some time, right? So we're really focused on kind of the box area where the Walmart and the movie theater and their surrounding parking lots used to be. To be clear, we are looking to set up a new form-based zoning code for the entire site and beyond the borders of the site to the exteriors of the ring road, right? So we will take the whole box and we'll come up with an optional zoning for the whole box. And optional is very key and important to understand. It's called an optional overlay district. So if you're a property owner that sits outside, like Metro Health, right? You will get this zoning as an option for you. You don't have to opt into this zoning. You can keep your zoning the way it is, right? But we will study it as though you may opt in in the future, right? And that's, as Eric kind of alluded to, what may come into play in discussions with you all in the school district about the properties that sit just outside of Severance, right? Adjacent to it, right? I have no idea whether it should be included in this zoning process or not. There's a lot of conversations around that. But know that if we did discuss that, that the whole concept is based upon optionality, right? So nobody has to opt in, right? You can keep with what you have, keep doing what you're doing, or you can opt in, right? That's the way we set these things up. And then last, I will say, before I get to my thank you page, right now, it's amazing to me because, you know, I'm learning about Cleveland proper, I'm learning about obviously the heights, I'm learning about the people of Ohio, and I've loved what I've learned. I was just in a Lyft ride with a woman and explaining how like, the one thing that I always like about places is how the people are to me, and it's been super welcoming. And one of the things that's been exciting to me is that we are very community engagement and crowdsourcing is something that we've been doing for years, crowdsourced placemaking, actually, first. And I was excited to learn that the Future Heights folks were already doing this crowdsourcing process when I got here, right? So I can plug into that with them and work with them. And one of the things that's going on right now is Future Heights, it's very, you know, ironic, but they, they happen to be doing, when I got to town, their next survey was going to be on Severance. So we collaborated with them on that survey. That survey was launched recently and will be open till October 15th. So I would love, this is the flyer, there's a QR code, I would love if the board and the district and the community members that you interact with were to be part of that survey process and to take that survey. So we're really kind of trying to push that out there. So there's my survey plug right now, and we'll certainly share that with you. And with that, thank you for your time. I'm gonna be around a lot, so this is gonna be just the first of many interactions. And I'm happy to take any questions that you have.
Well, I don't have a question, but I do want to ask you if you can please email us your presentation so we can put it on board docs. That way, people could get the QR code on the survey.
We already sent it over.
Awesome, thank you so much.
It's there and ready to go.
I will let the rest of the board ask any questions they have.
Yeah, so welcome, welcome to town.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sure you're finding what a, what a vital project this is and how the community really cares. I mean, this is one of the hot button issues in the community is what's going on in Severance. From a school's perspective, can you talk a little bit about in some of your previous projects, I'm like, New Rochelle maybe specifically?
Sure.
How you interacted with the school district in those cases?
Yeah, absolutely. It's a great question. So we had a very deep collaboration with the district. At one point, we actually were in the school buildings, measuring classrooms, figuring out what the capacity levels were, working with the district on a hand, hand-by-hand basis on what the impacts of the new development, new residential was gonna be on the district, you know, pupil yields, growth, shrinking, what schools are opening, what schools are closing, what are the budget gap issues, right? So I hope to dig in very granularly with you all about that stuff. You know, the more you can provide for me information-wise and issue-wise, the more, you know, informed I am and the smarter recommendations that I can make. So, you know, I, I've learned a little bit and heard some kind of ancillary stuff about the schools and, you know, the growth and the shrinkage and, you know, there are things that are, that are unique to, for, to me, like, you know, the, the interaction between the private education system and the public educations here is very different than it is in New York, right? So, so you know, I have to learn a lot of that stuff. But I guess the summary is, is that we had a very close relationship and we were very integral into the planning around the city's growth and how that was gonna be, how that was gonna interact with the planning around the school's growth and the school district's growth and shrink. You know, where, where they're shrinking, where they're growing, right? So I'm a numbers person also, so I really believe in the numbers and statistics and, you know, kind of looking at all that stuff. So I'd like to dive in deeply. I hope that answered your question.
Yeah, yeah. And maybe follow-up, did any of that project or other projects that you all have worked on, did they involve district-owned property from the outset?
Sure. So not, we have not redeveloped district-owned property in any of the deals that Impact has done. I will tell you that I've looked at a lot of school buildings and deals, and actually, my uncle, who was an original partner in my Renaissance entity, who's basically started my real estate career, he kind of cut his teeth redeveloping school properties into, like he did turned one into a hotel and one into a senior living facility. So I do have a lot of knowledge of that stuff. But ultimately, it's a piece of real estate, right? So if it's a vacant school, I would look at it frankly, like any other piece of real estate, and I'd look at the school district as like, as I'd look at any other private partner or public partner, right? One of the things that, you know, that is unique about this project for us is that the majority of the development we're gonna be doing is on private land, right? There are some smaller city parcels that are associated with it, but the far majority is private land. In all those other projects, I was dealing with underutilized municipal land, right? So that's an even hotter button issue, as you could imagine, right? Because it's public land than something that involves private land. But oftentimes, you know, the city was providing the land as kind of a contribution into the development effort or, you know, some sort of structure like that. What we're trying to do as a company now is partner with public entities to create value for them, right? So how do we create value for you as a district or you as a city around the assets that you own, right? And be a good partner in that effort, right? So not try to squeeze every dollar out of it for everybody, right? But try to create the uses that are needed, right, for the community, but also, you know, recognize that the district has budget gaps that they'd love to fill and issues that they'd love to solve. And maybe those things can be addressed as part of a development process. I don't know, I'm getting like way ahead of myself. But you know, the answer to, to your question is, is no, I've never done it. I've done it on municipal property. I've only done it on municipal property over the last 10 years. So I think of it as a similar type of thing, because they're both public entities, yeah.
And I think last one for me, hopefully, we'll see. With the timeline, you said that 2025 is gonna be focused on the zoning, sorting that out. Is there like a goal date for shovel in the ground?
Sure. July of 2026 is in my schedule right now, but those things always shift. You know, I had to, for, for NAMDAR and our partnership, I had to try to lay this out, right? And it was very difficult for me because I'm a very process before plan person. So normally, again, I'm dealing with municipal property. So the municipality doesn't necessar, I've convinced the municipality that they don't necessarily need to see a plan upfront, right? And we gotta go through a process. Well, in order for me to cut a financial deal with a private entity, I had to do some planning efforts, right? At least to try to figure out what I think is possible, right? And I had to lay out some, some kind of timelines. And I will tell you that, you know, the first three to five phases of this run into like 2040, right? So you know, first phase would start construction sometime in 2026, right? And then, you know, it'd be phased out over that period of time. So this, you know, again, I'm gonna be here for, you know, 20 years if things are going well, yeah. But we're gonna see shovels in the ground in the next year and a half to two years.
How many phases are you anticipating?
At least three to four for just that half of the site.
Wow, okay.
Yeah. It's a lot of acreage, right? We're talking about 20 to 30 acres of land on just half the site, right? And that doesn't include what may or may not happen, you know, outside the site with some of the property owners that I'm not in partnership, right? Like, we have an office building that's pretty defunct there, that Art Center building, right? I've spoken to the owner of that building, right? And you know, what do we do with that? And that actually is most adjacent to the school district's property, which sits behind that, right? So we need to be thinking about that, what they're doing, what their plans are, right?
That the like sort of mini high-rise that's next to the spectrum?
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, yeah, so.
My questions are more aligned with your workforce. Will the, will there be economic opportunities for the community to participate in this development?
My questions are more, um, aligned with your workforce. Um, will the, will there be economic opportunities for the community to participate in this development?
Sure.
And does your firm track minority participation?
Sure, absolutely. I mean, so, again, I don't know what the rules are in Ohio, right? I'm learning that stuff, but where I come from, MWB and WB are a huge piece of everything that has to be done, and it's just regulated, it's just part of what we do. Um, I believe very strongly in it, right? So, it's a huge piece of my DNA. Um, so, the answer is yes. How far we go with that stuff is up to all of us to work on together, whether it goes to the level of, there are projects that I work in where we have very distinct community benefits agreements, right? And hiring policies, contracting policies, right? All those types of things. There are projects that we work in where it's only regulated by the free dollars that we get from the state or the federal government, right? But there are requirements within those, right? So, I'm game for anything as long as we're all acknowledging that we have to make this feasible at the same, at the same time, right? And I don't know what exists here, right? Like, are your, is your workforce prepared for this? Is your, the contractors prepared for this, right? Learning about that is something that I have to do, right? Cause there's a lot of places that we work where we like insist upon, um, you know, MWB contracting for X percentage of all contracts, and then we discover that there, there's no bonding capabilities for those folks, right? Cause they're small mom and pop shops. So, I can't get a construction loan off of bonding off of their contractor, right? So, now, we have to work with them to help them get bonding capacity, right? So, I don't know what exists here, and that's a process that we have to go to, go through, but I'm very interested in it on the development side of the equation. You know, we are kind of the orchestrators of this whole thing. We hope to bring in other sponsors and investors and developers to develop under the game that we've set up together, all of us, right? So, one of the things that I'd love to do and explore is the incubation of minority developers, right? And we've been talking about that in other communities, um, and I, we'd love to explore that here. I don't know whether they exist, that we can like, you know, startup minority developers that are looking to get involved in these types of projects, but I would love to kind of explore that. Um, you know, uh, WB development firms would be great. Um, so, all of that is a possibility and something I take very seriously, um, but I need help, right? So, I need help, I need introductions, I, you know, I can't do this alone, so I'm not gonna pretend that I can do this alone. Doing it the way that we're talking about doing it takes a village and, you know, kind of no pun intended, right? Like, we all have to work towards these things, right? Cause the easiest thing in the world for a developer to do is, again, just say, this is my widget, this is my contractor, you know, this is how we do it, this is my financing, right? So, that's the easy way, this is the hard way, right? So, the hard way is something I want to do, but I need help doing it. I hope that answered your question, yeah.
I'm kind of interested in, um, in more of the calendar stuff.
Sure.
Uh, so, I know that you said, uh, I'm assuming it's next December, a sort of, end of next year is your, sort of your drop dead date is too, when you have your, your zoning in place. What are the other big thresholds do you see between now and then where the community can sort of say, yeah, this is, this is really progressing or we're hitting significant, um, bumps in the road?
Sure, sure, no, that's a good question, um...
And let me just preface it by saying that, that the, um, the community is so excited about the idea of Severance being redeveloped because it's been just such a massive miss, uh, missed opportunity and sort of become emblematic of, you know, the inner rings problems with, you know, no highway access, and so it's not sexy to a lot of the, you know, the big developers. Um, but I think it would be good for the community to sort of have, um, sort of landmarks to be looking for in terms of the progress of the project. So, I'll shut up and let you answer.
No, 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 I mean, I think it's a fantastic question. Um, I, I think the answer lies within my very granular schedule, right? So, there's milestones for everything in there, right? So, I would say the wrap is this first milestone by the end of this year. I'd say when we get into next year, you know, the first big step of the process will be uses and concept plan, right? So, we will determine at that point, what have we heard and what are the uses that we think work, both financially and from a community perspective? Whether those be residential-type uses, commercial uses, retail uses, industrial uses, whatever comes out of this process that we've gone through, right? Once those uses are selected, we will lay out a conceptual plan that we think is financially feasible, right? Once we've laid that out, that's a conversation that we're gonna have about that concept plan and how that plan looks, feels, shapes, what is contained in it, right? Once we have that concept plan in place, then we're gonna measure the impacts of that plan, right? What are the impacts of that plan on traffic, schools, water, sewers, views, shadows, you know, all that kind of things, right? So, each one of those things that I've told you are litmus tests along the way for all of us, right? Um, ultimately, once we get through the uses, the conceptual planning effort, um, and the impacts, and we've all kind of gotten comfortable with that, then we will actually be writing the text for the zoning code and the maps for the zoning code, right? In hopes that, you know, once we've gotten to that point, we've kind of all bought into it, right? Now, it's just process, right? How do you put the maps together for the zoning? How do you put the text amendments together for the zoning? How do we get those adopted? There's gonna be probably a public hearing process, right, which I'm hoping that we'll have a... Yeah, so, so, you know, I'm hoping that we will have so much public interaction, and this is, I will tell you, this is, we have been successful in this, not in every project, but in a lot of projects, where, you know, your normal development in this nation is fifty people speaking against something, four people speaking for it, you know, because it's always, it's always easier for people to come out against something than it is for people to come out for something. You know that very well, right? When somebody's for something, they're happy to just sit home and let it happen, right? When somebody's against something, they're happy to come out and fight it. So, my hope is, is that by the time we get to like third quarter of next year, we're having hearings at City Hall where we've got fifty people for and two people against, right? And that's what we're targeting, but we'll go through that rezoning process, the formal process, in hopes that the zoning will be adopted at the end of next year. My actual formal date of my twenty months is, I think, like March fifteenth of, I think it's, no, February fifteenth, excuse me, of 2026. Um, I may need more time. We may have to go back to NAMDAR in four months and say, hey, we're running a little bit behind, we need a little bit more time, right? So, um, but I think that if we're all working together, that they would be silly not to continue working with all of us, right? So, that's, that's my perspective on the whole thing. Um, yeah.
Well, as you're planning your community meetings, if you need space for that sort of thing, please know that we are eager partners with the city in terms of facilities. We've got some beautiful meeting spaces that we would love to, um, we're, we're always pleased to have the community in whether it's our event or the city's.
Well, we were literally just having this conversation on email with Sarah from Future Heights yesterday about space and where we could go, and Eric and I didn't even have talk, time to talk about it today, so we may take you up on that efforts, uh, that offer sooner than later. Thank you, yeah.
Come and see Heights High.
I will.
It's a gem.
I would love to. I, and you know, one of the things that I usually do in communities is like, I'll go into whatever that maybe they have like an economic development class or some sort of, you know, any class that you think is like appropriate, like they'll have a finance class or a business class, and I'll come in and do a presentation, right? And, you know, kind of talk to the student body to get some awareness going on with, you know, clearly, I've done it with my kids' middle school for Career Day, and that's a little harder for sixth and seventh graders, um, but once you get to high school, I think they get a, they get pretty interested. And just on a side note, I am the four-year-running PTA president for my kid's school, um, and it is a minority-majority Title I school in New York City. Um, and, uh, we've done some amazing things in the years that I've been part of this PTA, um, and, uh, you know, I get very excited about schools. So, I get what you are all challenged with. My wife is a middle school teacher, um, and, uh, yeah.
What does she teach?
She's middle school math in Brooklyn, yeah. And has been for a long time.
I appreciate, um, your willingness to engage with our students. I think that is an approach that more of our, um, individuals who do, uh, business with the district should take. Um, also, when all four phases are complete, what is, what does it look like to you, like?
I don't know, I don't know. I really, I honestly, again, this is the antithesis of my process, right? Like, I could sit here with you and like show you a concept plan that we like mocked up, right? But that's just not how I like to do this, right? I could be completely wrong, right? I don't understand this place, right? Like, that's the reality. I'm learning, right? I'm learning by the day. I mean, if, if this meeting was six months from now when we have another one of these meetings, I'm gonna tell you what I think and what I've been hearing, right? And I've heard some things, right? I've heard about housing needs, I've heard about retail desires, right? I've heard about restaurant desires. I've heard dozens of stories about how I used to go to the Severance Mall, and it was a place where we could gather and I could get these goods and services and this ice cream, and I worked at this restaurant, and, you know, people telling me these stories about how it used to be a place that this community could gather, right? So, we're trying to create the twenty-first century version of that place, right? Um, and I think we all know malls are failing across the country, right? It's just like, people want authenticity, is what I've been discovering over the last fifteen, twenty years of my career, right? They want authenticity, right? And unfortunately, the malls don't always provide that authenticity, right? Because it's the same thing stamped over and over and over and over again, right? So, and they have their place, and some of them will do great and survive, and some of them won't. This just happens to be one that didn't make it, but that doesn't mean we can't create a great place.
Well, thank you for being here with us this evening, we really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Stay in touch.
Yeah.
And I really appreciate the fact that you reached out to us early in this process and want to include us and want to be partners with us. That's amazing, so thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for being here this evening, and I hope we see you many, many times over the next twenty years.
Absolutely, hundred percent. And then, and that's my email. Honestly, like, I'll give everybody my cellphone, it's, if you want to take it now, do you want to take my cellphone?
Sure.
It's five one six.
Everyone will have your...
Everyone in the committee will have your cellphone if you want it.
It's okay.
Better than pay.
Nine eight four, five one six, nine eight four, six eight six eight.
Can you repeat that again?
Five one six, nine eight four, six eight six eight. And I'm Ryan Porter, and people can call me if you have questions. I mean, I, I'm, I'm pretty prompt about responding, um, but, you know, it may take me a day or two, right?
Okay, thank you so much.
League of Women Voters, did you get that phone number for the, uh...
Put in your notes there.
Thank you so much for being here, we really appreciate it.
Thank you for coming.
And the next item on our agenda is strategic plan update, goals one and two, so I will turn it over to our superintendent and her team to present the strategic plan update.
And good evening, everyone. I'm gonna ask the team to, uh, come to their presentation spots, and, uh, I assume you'll hook up so we can follow along on the presentation. Come on up, team.
Come on up. Yes, please come up now.
All right. So, this evening, we will be presenting our progress on goals one and two of our strategic plan. I'm going to ask, uh, Dr. Jenkins, who can do the intros. Actually, you want me to do that part for you while you get started?
Yep, I just need to plug in here.
Okay.
Cause we do have a slide deck, so, so I can get a little help. I'm gonna plug in. Should I join? Oh, well, me, yes.
So, I believe the lead facilitator of the session tonight will be our new chief academic officer, Dr. Jenkins, and I, I'm sorry, I'm trying to give you a little stall time.
Thank you for the stall time.
Yeah. Um, and joining, uh, Dr. Jenkins this evening, we have our chief of schools, uh, Rachel Coleman. We have our curriculum coordinator, Amanda Zappalteknie. Our director of social emotional learning and academic supports, Dr. Lashonda Abdustar. Our director of college and career readiness, Bob Swaggart. And our director of student services, Karen Liddell Anderson. So, our intros are out of the way, turning it over to Dr. Jenkins.
Okay, good evening. Thank you for that, Superintendent Kirby. I'd like to, uh, begin by extending a warm welcome to our superintendent, treasurer, and members of the Board of Education. Thank you for joining us this evening and for your ongoing commitment to the success of our student, staff, and district as a whole. Today's work session is an important opportunity for us to collaborate and focus on key priorities that will shape our path forward. We have an agenda that will provide updates, share our progress, and address some of the critical goals we are working towards. Your insights, feedback, and leadership are essential to ensuring that we are on track to meet these objectives and continue providing the highest quality education to our students. We look forward to a productive discussion and are grateful for your time and dedication to these efforts. With that, let's begin our presentation. To set the stage for today's session, I'd like to start by outlining our presentation goals. Our focus is to share progress on the 2026 strategic plan by focusing on two critical areas that align with our long-term vision. Our first area is goal one, student outcomes, where we are all focusing on expectations, proficiency, and mastery. We'll review where we stand in terms of academic performance, progress towards proficiency targets, and how we are working towards to ensure that all students reach mastery in their learning. The second area is goal two, educational approach, which centers on equity, empowerment, and opportunities. We'll discuss how our educational practices are evolving to create a more inclusive environment, empowering all of our students of all backgrounds and providing equal opportunities for success. After sharing this progress, we'll move into discussing, discussing the next steps and how we plan on continuing to advance towards these goals and what additional actions we may, may be needed to ensure success in, by 2026. And I, as Superintendent Kirby introduced our presenters tonight, they are listed here. Uh, we all have, play a role in tonight's presentation. In terms of the specific components of our strategic plan, we'll start with our goals. These are broad, long-term aims that align with the district's mission and vision. They represent the bigger picture of where we want to go. Goals guide all of our efforts and keep, help keep everyone on the same page when we're working towards the district's future. Then we'll have objectives. Objectives are specific measurable targets that will tell us if we are on track to achieve our goals. While goals give us direction, objectives help us keep, keep us on track towards progress and benchmarks for success. They ensure that our goals are tangible and obtainable. And next, we have our strategies. These represent high-level plans that operationalize our overarching goals. Think of strategies as the how. They are the approaches we use to meet our objectives. Effective strategies focus on our efforts to ensure that we are using resources efficiently. And finally, we have our action steps. These are specific, concrete actions that directly support the strategies. Action steps are day-to-day tasks that move us closer to our goals. They break down the strategies into manageable tasks, ensuring that we stay on track to make, to make consistent progress. So, I'd like to take a moment to look at our 2026 key data targets. These are specific measurable outcomes that reflect our commitment to student success. These targets help us focus on critical milestones and ensure that we are on track to deliver the best outcomes for all students. Our first target is to have a hundred percent of our third graders reading at or above their identified grade level. Early literacy is one of the most important indicators of long-term academic success. Ensuring that all third graders reach this milestone will lay a strong foundation for their future learning. Next, we aim for eighty percent of our students to show proficiency on state assessments. This reflects not only the understanding of key academic concepts, but our ability to support diverse learners. By focusing on this, we ensure that the majority of our students meet or exceed state standards. Algebra is a critical gateway for higher-level math and science courses. That's why our goal, goal is ninety percent of ninth graders will have course access in algebra. Achieving this target will boost their confidence and open doors for opportunities in high school and beyond. Our next target is ninety-five percent four-year graduation rate. Our next target is ninety-five percent four-year graduation rate. We know that graduating on time is key to setting students up for success. Whether they choose to pursue college, career, or other post-secondary options, this high school gradu-, the high school graduation rate reflects our dedication to preparing students for life after high school. And finally, our goal is ninety percent of students to pursue college or a viable career path. This means providing them the skills and knowledge they need to succeed in whatever they choose, whether it's higher education, vocational training, or enter the workforce. This target underscores our commitment to ensuring that students are ready for life beyond the classroom. And we'll begin with Goal One, Student Outcomes, which emphasize expectations, proficiency, and mastery. This goal is fundamental to our strategic plan as it directly impacts the academic success and overall development of our students. So as we move forward through this presentation, I wanted to take a moment to introduce a valuable resource for our discussion. It's a glossary of terms. Understanding the terminology we'll be using is essential for clarity and ensuring that everyone is on the same page. We have prepared three slides that outline these key terms and definitions that may arise throughout the presentation. This glossary will serve as a handy reference for you as we delve into the goals and updates. So there's the three. Okay. As we work towards our 2026 Key Data Targets, it's important to regularly, regularly assess where we stand. Today, I'll be sharing progress for the 2023 and 24 school year and how we're moving towards achieving these goals. Our first goal is to have a hundred percent of third graders reading at or above grade level by 2026. For the 2023-24 school year, sixty-eight point four percent of third graders show proficiency on state, on the state test for English Language Arts, or ELA. This marks an increase of two point nine percent compared to the previous school year, 2022, 2023. While there's still work to be done, this is steady improvement that reflects the impact of our literacy programs and early interventions. Next, we'll look at our goal of having eighty percent of students show proficiency on state assessments by 2026. For the, for school year 2023-24, forty-four percent of our students demonstrated proficiency on the Ohio State Test, a result that is consistent with the previous year. Although this number hasn't increased, it gives us a clear picture of where more targeted support is needed, and we will continue to focus on lifting all students to meet or exceed these standards. And now, turning our, turning to our goal of having ninety percent of ninth graders achieve course success in algebra, let's review the progress for the class of 2027. In school year 2023-24, three hundred and seventy students in grades seven, eight, nine, and nine attempted to earn credit in Algebra One. Of those two hundred and eighty-two students, seventy-six percent earned all the credits they attempted. Specifically, seventy percent of Class 2027 earned the Algebra One credit they attempted. While we are not yet at the ninety percent goal, this data shows a positive foundation to build upon, and we are taking steps to further support students in algebra to ensure success. So in summary, while we've seen improvements in some areas and maintained stability in others, these results remind us of the importance of continuous effort and refinement in our strategies. And as we push towards the 2026 Key Data Targets, our focus will remain on identifying where we can make the most impactful changes to help all students succeed.
Just want to say, as you go to the next slide, I want to point out from a state perspective, because I know that's one comparison the board likes, when we look at state performance on third grade reading. We continue to outperform the state, so the state's at sixty-four point two percent a lot versus our sixty-eight percent. And then, in terms of the algebra number, it is an increase in terms of the number of students earning, um, that credit from seventy-five percent to seventy-six percent as well. So that overall number.
Thank you.
And just a question on that number. That is, the goal there is cumulatively over the course of their high school career, right? Not in any given year, okay?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll review our progress towards two critical 2026 targets, ensuring that ninety-five percent of students graduate in four years, and ninety percent of students pursue college and/or a viable, or a viable career. These targets help, help us measure how well we are preparing our students for success in their futures, whether that means higher education, entering the workforce, or other career paths. Looking at the class of 2023, we see another positive outcome. According to the state report card, the graduation rate for this class was ninety point six percent. Our next target is that ninety percent of students will pursue college or a viable career after graduation. Based on the National Student Clearinghouse data, fifty-five percent of the class of 2023 enrolled in, in college at some point during the first year after high school, as reported in August 2024. This shows a significant number of students opting for higher education, which we know there are many paths to success beyond college. To ensure that we are preparing all students for life after high school, the College Career Workforce and Military Readiness component uses eleven separate measures. These metrics help Ohio Public Schools, districts assess how well students are being prepared, the various post-graduation paths, and whether they're continuing their education, entering the workforce, or joining the military. This comprehensive approach ensures that every student has the skills, resources, and opportunities to pursue a future that suits their interests and abilities. So in conclusion, we've made commendable progress on both our graduation rate and our post-high school readiness. We recognize the need for continued efforts to reach our 2026 goals by focusing on personalized support and using the readiness measures to guide our work. So we're confident that we can all help our students succeed in the path that they choose after graduation. So at this time, I'd like to turn the microphone over to Ms. Rachel Coleman, Chief of Schools, discuss her supports that she has in place.
Dr. Jenkins, can I just ask a quick question of you? I know that, um, keeping track of our grads has always been a very, very difficult thing to do because they're scattered to the winds, as eighteen-year-olds often are, twenty-year-olds. Do we feel confident in the National Student Clearinghouse data that that is, um, that's giving us accurate data?
Is that a question?
Yeah.
Sorry.
No, please, go ahead.
Um, just because I, as a former high school principal, National Student Clearinghouse was something that I relied on, but also know you miss a lot of kids because if kids choose not to allow you to track if they're there or not, then you don't get them. So, uh, with Gear Up, um, I know we have opportunities to get some additional data, but that fifty-five percent number, which is the highest we've had at least for the past five years, it's likely higher. Generally, it's higher, just, you know, National Student Clearinghouse in any school. But yeah, it is, you will miss kids. Sometimes the clearinghouse doesn't get every school, and sometimes kids don't choose to give you permission to know what they're doing.
Right, and so I guess I'm just, I'm just wondering about the goal. If we need to sort of revisit the goal itself in terms of the wording of the goal, that sort of, that sort of thing. Because I think that we're doing great work with this goal in mind. I'm just not sure that, you know, when, when the goal is ninety percent, you don't leave yourself a whole lot of margin for error.
Right.
And so it might be just ninety percent of the students that were, that were able to track. You know, uh, instead of ninety percent of the graduates, ninety percent of the students that were, that were able to track. Might be a, something along, I'm spitballing, but you get what I'm saying.
Yeah, to recognize the fact that we're not tracking every student.
And how do we track the viable career part of it?
Right. Right.
Haven't worked that out yet. It's really about, um, students enrolling in a, I mean, students, um, working, and earning a wage where they can thrive. And that, I mean, it's something we're struggling with, the states kind of struggling with because they have it in their workforce readiness piece. But especially as we start to look towards a new strategic plan, it would, that's a, both good adjustments to make her think about what that could look like.
I have another question on that. So when we talk about ninety percent of students will pursue college or a viable career, I'm assuming we have the military under viable career. But then, we specifically call out college. What if someone's going to like a two-year trade school? Where do we put that in there? Is that, that would be considered? So any kind of additional, post-secondary training? Okay, thank you.
Have we considered, um, making, um, FAFSA completion like a requirement?
Yes. We have, uh, we, it is a tricky legal thing. So I think it was last year, we asked our attorneys to look at that. So there's, um, policy language that's a bit gray, where we didn't feel comfortable pursuing that yet. Even the state was considering doing a required FAFSA in some legislation, and they kind of backed off on that. So it's something we're still watching. It might, the state may, um, you know, bring that back. But we decided to, to kind of pause on that to see how things kind of played out, yeah.
That might be one of those things that we ask OSBA to pursue.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I know there are families that for very specific instances aren't going to fill out a FAFSA. And you know, if your parent is an employee at a university and you get a tuition benefit, those families see no need to fill out a FAFSA. I know when we were pushing FAFSA, I got a couple of calls from a handful of families that were in that situation that were just, you know, I am not going to fill out a FAFSA, I don't need to, here's why. So I mean, there's always that exception to the rule. I know it's not a lot of people, but there is.
I would just say, um, based on the demographics of our district that the majority of families would benefit from completing the FAFSA.
Absolutely.
I still had another question in regards to the ten percent that we're, um, missing from the graduation. Do we know, like, who those students are? Okay.
We do.
Yeah.
Okay.
The other thing, FAFSA-related, e- even if we can't legally make it a requirement, maybe there's other levers that legal could look into, things like, can, in order to go on class trips, you have to have your FAFSA done? Or, you know, are there other things that we can do to lean on that a little bit?
That would be, that, that's pretty, pretty dicey.
Yeah. Bob, do you want to share some of our many efforts we've been engaged around FAFSA these past three years? These are good, good, good ideas, and Bob has been deep in the FAFSA, FAFSA world.
Yes, good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Bob.
So, there's a lot. I mean, I think some of the, the big barriers have already kind of come out in some of the discussion around, you know, is this legislated from the state? We see that there are some national trends where a couple of states have recently come on board with making it a requirement. And actually, one of the oldest states that had it as a requirement just recently, like, backed off of it. And so, um, where they were seeing a lot of success in Louisiana, actually, that state just, um, just, just stopped because of like the political pressure, um, of the legislature. So, you know, I think sometimes it seems to be getting caught up in a little bit of the, the legislative game instead of, you know, really kind of thinking about the, the benefit to students and families. Um, I do think that there's a huge benefit for all of our students. I think the big misconception for many of the families that we've worked with over the last couple of years is like, well, I'm not going to get much. It's like, you're going to get a lot, you're going to become eligible for a lot more. You're right, it might not be the full scholarship. You might not be able to go on all of the, um, financial aid you receive if you become Pell eligible. But that notion is even work-study is going to put some, some money in the students' pockets. It's going to help out. And you start thinking about like, where are all of the different pieces of funding going to come to support, um, the, the two-year and four-year, um, college-going rates? So I think the, the best thing that we have, and even if, you know, not to say like we, we should go with a requirement or not, but that idea of it's meant to be an inclusive practice, right? And if, if families say, this is why we're opting not to do it, that we also listen to that and say, great, like, we hear you. And I think that even the superintendent and I, when we are talking about some of these, uh, practices that we might employ, it would be to even have, you know, an opt-out. So when people say, yep, I'm signing the form that say, I understand, I'm not completing a FAFSA, thank you very much, we won't continue to hassle you. Like, we, that's a family decision. But I think we still have a long way to go with just making sure that all families that need and want support actually have that support. So I think that that's probably more where our efforts have been lately about, um, the, one, overcoming some of the national barriers to FAFSA completion the last year. And then, of course, now the backlash of stigma that people think, um, FAFSA is really complicated, when ultimately, it is simplified. But sometimes even the most simple things become really complicated in their, um, execution. So even this year, for example, we just had, um, one of our senior, our senior night. Uh, we really wanted to get everybody out there to understand the first thing to do right now. You could take action. FAFSA is not going to open until December first, uh, for this senior class. But what we really want to do is get them to complete their FSA ID. Like, let's take the steps right now that really, if we postpone those, then the process becomes more complicated. But if we just take care of this one little step right now, it's kind of like, imagine starting your career and doing your onboarding all in the same day? It's like, no, you know, we kind of do orientation events so people can get a, a kind of a slow walk into some of these processes. And that's what we're really trying to have families do right now, is think about outreach. Think about what can we do now, between now and Thanksgiving? And then how do we make sure that we have the support when, um, it opens up December first?
And it may also be useful to, you know, to reframe, um, the FAFSA that is not, that you just don't complete it to qualify for the Pell Grant. Like, everybody is eligible for some type of financial aid that is, financial aid is just not the Pell Grant. That is scholarships and loans as well. So a lot of scholarships require FAFSA completion, um, you know? And, and again, loans are, are part of that as well. So it might just be useful, you know, for some of those to just reframe, um, what completing the FAFSA means. It doesn't always mean that, you know, you're eligible for need-based aid.
And a work-study. Work-study, I don't think you can get without FAFSA. And I know a lot of kids rely on that. Another thing on this slide I don't want to lose sight of, um, we don't talk about it, but our five-year graduation rate? Because our five-year graduation rate is way above the state average. And I know a lot of people don't understand, why would you talk about a five-year graduation rate? But we've got a lot of students who are transient, who move into the district. They come in from another school district, and they, they may not be on track. Getting them on track and getting them graduated is amazing.
They have a medical emergency that slows them down.
Yeah, there's all kinds of reasons why people would have to go with a five-year graduation. And I'm very proud of our five-year graduation rate.
The other thing related to that, um, I was doing the, you know, back-of-the-envelope math a little bit on, on how many students that, that five percent delta is right now between our, our current, uh, graduation rate of ninety point six and ninety-five. Given the sizes of our, our student body, and, you know, class-to-class, there's some shift, of course, but, uh, we are not a district that has, uh, where, where that delta is for kids. And so, so what, how big of a climb do you see this as? How big of a, of a, of a hill?
Well, I, I think, you know, the first thing is we have identified, you know, we know who those students are. So I, you know, I think when, when we think about, you know, closing that gap that we're talking about, I think we also think of like all the opportunities that we're providing students. You know, we have a pretty robust summer program that has a lot of credit recovery opportunities and things like, you know? So we, we, we get down to the very specific level of tracking those students and providing those opportunities as quickly as possible and to try every angle that we can. So I, when I think of it in terms of a student-by-student approach, I think it's very feasible to, to really close in on that. We often get very specific and very strategic when we think about each of those students because every, like, we've mentioned that some of these, you know, different circumstances, and we've heard like medical circumstances, or it could be coming in from, just trying to recover from, you know, another school that they transferred in from. So we have all kinds of different circumstances and different kinds of scenarios that we deal with. But one of our goals is to really provide opportunities in, in any, any way that we possibly can and be creative with that as well. You know, we want to make sure that, that we're there to serve those students, even at that individual level. So I'm very proud of what we did even, um, and at some point, I know Superintendent Kirby and I were talking about like the success that we've had over the summer and some of those programs that we bring to those students to try to really get them through that finish line. So I think it's very feasible, and I could open up to anyone else who wants to add to that, but I, I feel like we, we have the process in place.
I think Bob can really speak to.
I kind of looked over there.
The, the work, because, you know, it's, you know, the college career work builds K-12, but we know that senior year. I only say. I only say that because over the summer, you know, every other week I would ask Bob, where are we with our graduation rate? So, like, there's, it is actually in a large school complicated. And it's, I'm just going to say one more thing, I'll pass over. And it's complicated because if we have a student that enrolls the day before the last day of school, who comes in and they do not have the credits to be a senior, they count against our graduation rate. If we have a student that leaves, leaves the school also that last day and they're not, they're, they don't have the correct credits, they will come out. But we will have students that are coming in and out, we will have students who leave, who are on track, and they come out. So in smaller, you know, there's a lot of smaller districts around us that might have like 80 seniors. It's, it can be challenging there because one really counts, but it's also easier to manage. But with 400 kids in a graduating class, 350 kids in a graduating class, it's a little different. So, you know, Bob can speak more to those specifics and all the different structures we have set up for that, but just that context.
Yeah, I think Superintendent Kirby highlighted some of the groups that make it complicated to keep this graduation rate where we really would prefer it. You know, I think last year in the spring, we had five seniors enroll in, you know, the, the latter part of the school year that were seriously credit deficient. So again, those are not students that typically have been with us, they did not have a previous enrollment record in CHUH, and yet they showed up in April with five credits. So, you know, one of those, like, that's the challenge, right? Like, so what do we do, like, how can we support students in that path? Because sometimes we don't even know the path that they took to get to us with five credits in the second semester of their senior year. But we have our summer school program, a lot of those students will return as we look at the five-year graduation rate. Many of them find success through the options program. So typically if a student kind of misses that transition into their graduating class and they go directly into the options program where they get a little bit more of a tailor-made approach to fulfilling those graduation requirements. And they do a really nice job of trying to help provide that individual plan for students. You know, our TASSL program has also started to really think about credits in a way that maybe is different than some of our traditional day-school program. We've been trying to work with that after-school program where yes, there's credit recovery, but there are some students that just need a different approach to, you know, earning credits in the first place. That, that's, you know, there's not a cognitive delay, there's not a disability of, of something that really is saying a modified curriculum, but there is just an, an interest. There's, the, the missing component is like, tell me where I'm going to go in a year or two from here. So let's start thinking about way of bundling some of those credits even through our Credit Flex program where students might be learning hands-on and then getting English, Science, Math, Social Studies credits in a bundle through an experience rather than having to sit through individual discrete classes. So, you know, there's a lot of different ways that we're trying to approach students. And we're, we're also trying to make sure that we keep really good tabs on the students that as they come through, the ones that we start losing track of, that students start bouncing around. And, you know, they may not be in Northeast Ohio anymore, but yet no school, other school has claimed them in the EMIS system. So it's like that student is still sitting out there hurting us in the graduation rate for the district, but we may have never seen them for the last two years. So our social workers are always out there trying to find students, doing home visits, making sure that we do residency checks. So all of that kind of flows into this. But to your question around like the number, like, we're probably talking about 20 to 25 kids. So like, when we, 15 of them we lose track of because they have essentially become a dropout. Like, then we're talking about 10 kids are the difference between us hitting a 95% and not. And those students usually will come through in a five-year graduation rate. So it's just that idea of like, we, we are very lucky in CHUH and the fact that so many of the students that don't graduate in four years want to stay with us. We really do have an excellent track record with students. It's like, great, yep, I'm going to work through this summer. And you guys always come to the summer graduation and you see students like, yep, I figured it out, I, I got it, we got, you know, 12 kids through this summer.
Shout out to them.
Exactly, right? And, and I think some more is just the students that will come back even that next semester or two semesters and still continue their, their education. So, and there's some other dynamics that also fit for that where sometimes there's family issues or just family concerns that students have to deal with. And it kind of puts academics on the back burner. So there are a lot of, a lot of components when you start getting into that last like 5%. That shows that most of our systems are set up for success. And then it's really that, some of the additional special circumstances that we're trying to solve on a case-by-case basis.
So, I'd like to just throw in three little nuggets. Really what, what I think we've been saying without saying is that these are the kids for whom relationships, that's the leverage, and it's, it's everything. And that's when you see a kid walk across the stage and literally lift up, pick her up off of the ground and hug her, a member of our staff. And those numbers are small enough that it really is, it really does come down to the relationships. It's also worth injecting a reminder here that we live in a state that is literally known as the Wild West when it comes to options for students. We have voucher schools that monetize our children and that turn them into a commodity and a piece of inventory for some of these voucher schools who will offer a brand-new computer and internet access for, for kids who sign up. And these, these schools are utterly unaccountable. And however, those kids who then take that option, which is attractive in August when you're looking first day of school in the eye, they come back to us because they decide they want a diploma, but they've now been a year functionally out of school and out of reach and online and, and behind. And so, you know, sure, ABC Online School just made $8,500 off of our student minus $1,000 computer. You know, but now it is our obligation and, and it is our blessing, it is our, our, this is why we exist, to help those kids get through. So, and then the final piece is that we also have to remember that we live in a state that has the legislature who we need to rely on to pass good, pub, good school legislation, has converted our Department of Education into the Department of Education and Workforce Development and slashed their funding so much that in order to do the work they've been assigned to do, they have to increase, they're looking at increasing the licensing fees for Ohio's teachers. That they literally are, are looking at balancing their budget by increasing the, the fees that teachers and administrators pay to renew their licenses. But that's the legislature has so starved our Department of Education and Workforce Development that they have to increase their fees. So, we can't look to Columbus for a whole lot of help. Thankfully, we've got people in this district that were born for the work and our blessings to, to our kids.
Bob, I will say that some of the things that you said, I heard innovation, I heard project-based learning. And I think maybe this group of students, like you mentioned, don't thrive in the traditional, you know, sit-and-get model. So we might need to implement some innovation for them to help them to the finish line.
Yeah, school within a school.
I needed it. I was in one of those programs my senior year. I showed up senior year with very few credits, I was out very busy doing other important things. And so we had to get creative with some credit earning. Health resulted from a trip to the Cleveland Health Museum, the giant molar, never forget it.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Dr. Jenkins, I, I always go to the bottom, I always go to the bottom slide and it says, questions and comments, and it's like, oh, that's cute. We're going to wait to the end, sure.
I do not know how to segue, so I'm just going to go ahead and get started. First of all, thank you so much for allowing us to present this evening, we really appreciate the opportunity. So I am going to speak on GO1, which is school services, and I'm going to reflect on what we did last year and what we are going to do this year. So I'm going to talk about the Building Level Action Plan, we will not ed you speak this year, but, but it is BLAP. And it is in your glossary. The Building Level Action Plan is actually the engine for the school. So our building level action, our BLT members come together at the end of the school year for several days and they begin to create the Building Level Action Plan for the current year that we're sitting in. Last year, we restructured the BLAP to the playbook. Previous to that, the forms were everywhere, people had to really search for what they needed. Last year was in one playbook where you could find all the resources that you needed. We had a self-assessment of the BLAP, which was done by the building leadership team. We also had monthly monitoring and feedback of the Building Level Action Plan in our principal leadership meetings. Last year, we conducted learning walks where there were members of central office and curriculum and instruction team that would go in into the buildings to help monitor that process and provide feedback. And lastly, last year, we did an alignment of data monitoring, stages of team development and feedback cycles for our leadership teams. This year, we're going to continue to monitor our Building Level Action Plan in our principal leadership meetings. There is a new process that we're also doing with reflection partners for principals. This is where we partner principals up and they actually are able to give each other feedback on the work that they're doing. So for example, our two middle school principals are partners. This work is very important because it helps when you have someone who is involved in similar work. So our two middle schools are partnered, we partnered up our elementary principals in different cohorts, and of course, our high school and options are partnered up. We are introducing and supporting and monitoring a problem of practice work in each school to increase student achievement. So in addition to the Building Level Action Plan, we are growing our principals to actually look at a problem of practice that they are focused on that they believe will give them the most bang for their bucks. We're really focused on how do we move the needle while increasing the capacity of our building leaders. And lastly, we are actively supporting principals and teachers in our teacher-based teams. TBTs are a huge focus of the work, this is where our teachers come together to talk about best practices. We also monitor and analyze the growth that our students are making, so it is really important to support that work. Last year, we had 30 minutes of TBT times in elementary school. This year, we're proud to say that through scheduling modifications, we are now up to 50 minutes. At the high school, the TBT set outside of the school day and now they are inside of the school day. So that work is very intentional and we look forward to the gains that those changes will bring. I'm also going to talk a little bit about principal leadership and the steps that we took last year. OTES, which is the Ohio Teacher Evaluation System. We did a review of that through the rubric to practice and provide feedback during walkthroughs and observations. A lot of this work was done during our monthly principal meetings. We utilize the evaluation system as a coaching tool to provide a system of support, this was last year. And we started a year-long study in Building Thinking Classrooms and Mathematics by Peter, and I hope I don't say his name wrong, Lijadell, for a monthly book study for principals. This year, we are still reviewing our OTES rubric to practice and provide in-person and timely feedback after walkthroughs and observations. And this is very important because teachers and principals are very busy, but providing feedback and not doing the face of, face touch afterwards. While the feedback was there, we could not guarantee that people were looking at it in a timely manner. This also builds up principal leadership because you want to be able to know that I had the time to go and talk to that teacher. Sometimes the email just doesn't do it, it helps when you hear directly from your building leader and then you're able to circle back in a week or two to actually see if the changes were implemented or the supports were provided. We are going to continue the utilization of OTES as a tool to provide support. Again, that's the teacher evaluation system, it's very important that our principals are comfortable with that tool and that they understand it. So we will always continue to do that work. And then lastly, we're doing ongoing professional development for principals, including the next step in Building Thinking Classrooms and Math Practices in our buildings. So in this step, we're moving out of the book and actually going into the work. We will be looking at math tasks. Part of a, the Building Thinking Classrooms is to present rigorous math tasks for students. We actually get them out of their seat, they're up, they're talking to each other, they're engaged. This work will be explored during the TBT process so that you can see the alignment of our work where we're starting to connect the dots. Lastly, I'll review our retention policies and supports at the transition grades. So previously, we reviewed new legislation around retention. We facilitated the co-creation of a comic district-wide transition process from fifth to sixth grade and eighth to ninth grades. And then we had district transitions expanded. This year, we're going to continue to monitor and enhance the district-wide transition process from fifth to sixth and eighth to ninth. We're going to support and continue the ninth grade transition experience. I always have to pause here, take my hat off to Ms. Perry who went out on a limb and did a phenomenal job with the freshman orientation. She will continue that work. And we're also going to review and modify the kindergarten kickoff experience. I know I saw a lot of you at kindergarten kickoff. So we really want to review that process to make it about Cleveland Heights University Heights more and really provide parents with an inside glimpse of what we offer. We offer a lot to our students, we want to talk about our curricular opportunities, supports from the community that we have. And in the common practice, we just don't have a lot of time to do that. So those of you that have visited know that we're outside and there's some activities. So we just want to include a piece for the parents to hear about the wonderful district that they have just joined. Thank you.
I also want to give a shout out to Ms. Perry. I loved seeing her at the eighth grade promotions.
Yeah.
Introducing herself and getting familiar with the ninth grades, I think she's doing a phenomenal job with transition.
Thank you.
Do we look at the retention between Roxborough Elementary and Rox Mid?
Oh, in terms of the numbers, we haven't, but we can.
I can do that.
That might glean some information.
When you do your, your, your school walks, what is the area of greatest inconsistency between, between buildings that you'd like to see become more consistent?
That's a really great question. This year, and I want to just pause for a second, talk about how we're doing them so far. So we have partner walks, I talked very quickly about the Principal Reflection Partner. Those principals are actually going to be walking each other's buildings to get rid of the inconsistency. So it's interesting, I was a principal at Roxborough Middle School, I, I've never did a partner walk with Jeff before. This year, we are doing partner walks so that when you talk about what you're doing in your math with your seventh graders, I can say, you know what, we are lock and step with each other. The biggest inconsistency would be that as far as the timing of when one person is joining a unit and the other person, but also the instructional practices and strategies that we're implementing. So we're really looking forward to the problem of practice work where the two principals are partnered together and then they're sharing, here's what I'm working on, here's what you're working on, but also being able to say, why is it that my team is two weeks behind your team? And talking through that work because we know that that alignment piece is critical.
Thank you.
Where, where do the walks fit in the OTES system?
Great question. So I'm going to talk about OPAS for a little bit. So OPAS is the Ohio Principal Evaluation System. The walks would really hit OPAS. When the principals are doing the walks with their partner, they are not evaluative in nature for teachers. But for principals who I supervise, it's an opportunity, opportunity for them to be able to say that I'm working with a colleague on my problem of practice, I'm able to expand my knowledge base, I'm able to sit with someone and have a real thought partner besides my supervisor in the work. While I do my best to create a safe place, I think all of us can agree that when you have a partner that you can say, I'm struggling, I'm really not doing this to the capacity that I want, and you see that they are, it works well. So just to reiterate, the walks that the principals do are not evaluative at all for teachers, but more of a support for their own skill set.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any further questions?
Keep going.
Thank you. With that, I am going to turn it over to you. Amanda Zatno-Techney, who I just want to say I'm so happy that you are a part of our team, you're a very hard worker and you fit in very well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Um good evening. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about curriculum and instruction and how we are supporting this first goal this year. Um so one of the main focal points for our department is utilizing board-adapted materials to provide high-quality instruction. And so last year, we had the first year of implementation of our ELA board-approved high-quality instructional materials, which were wonders in my perspectives. And so last year, there was a lot of professional learning um that our teachers went through to become more comfortable with those materials. Um last year, we also piloted high-quality instructional materials for math and adopted INTO Math, which is our newly adopted high-quality instructional materials for this year. Um so this year, we do have a strong focus on um providing teachers with professional learning to implement those. Uh math board-approved materials. And so we have had some training so far this year. Um in August, before school began, we had a virtual training for INTO Math. And then over the last two weeks, we've had trainings for all of our teachers that are using that curriculum. Um and the feedback that we've gotten so far has been very positive. Um we are also continuing to support year-two implementation of ELA high-quality instructional materials, so continuing to. Ensure that teachers are aware of all of the resources that are included. And that they feel comfortable utilizing those materials to support all of the needs of students in their classrooms. And then um starting September thirtieth, we will also be providing weekly updates to teachers and school leaders. On curriculum pacing, including focus standards, instructional routines, and assessments that are coming up in the current week of instruction. Um we know that families um are integral in student learning, and so we wanna ensure they're aware of the tools and resources that are available to them and their students at home. So last year, we provided letters from our core adapted materials and access to online learning platforms. And this year, we will continue to support family involvement in student learning. Um we do have some online platforms such as Zern and Waggle that students have access to and families would have access to at home. As well as continuing those family letters from our core adapted materials. We have also continued to adjust the assessments and assessment cycle to better align with student needs. And last year, the district used the Ohio Benchmark Assessment in Math and English Language Arts. Um this year, we are using the interim assessments as well as continuing to use the Ohio Benchmark Assessment in tested areas. Um so the interim assessments will be given in quarters one and three, and the benchmark assessment will be given in quarter two. Um those interim assessments were developed by our instructional specialists in the Curriculum and Instruction Department. Um in collaboration with our Data and Assessment Department. Um we are also focusing on gap closing for our English learners. And so this gap closing measure on the state report card is measured by the OWLPA assessment, which is the Ohio English Ling- Language Proficiency Assessment. Um so all of our students. Who are identified as English language learners um take this assessment every year and it measures their proficiency in um the four language domains. Um reading, writing, writing, speaking, and listening. And so for last year, um for the our state report card, our EL gap closing target was fifty point two percent. Um we had eighty-five students take the OWLPA measure last year and fifty-three of them counted towards this measure. So when students take the OWLPA the first time, it's essentially a baseline. And from that baseline, a growth target is met is determined. And when they take the assessment the second time, we determine whether or not they met that growth target. And so. Of the eighty-five students who had taken it, fifty-three of them had that baseline, and so they were counted in this measure. Of the fifty-three students who took the assessment, um eight of them scored proficient and they exited from the EL program. And thirteen of those students met their growth target. Um so if we look at that percentage-wise, we had thirty-nine point six percent of our students. That's the eight students that scored proficient and the thirteen. Per um thirteen who met the growth target um counted in that thirty-nine point six percent. So we were ten point six. Percent away from meeting our goal of fifty point two percent, which would have been six students. So if six additional students had met their growth target, we would have hit our gap closing goal for that year. Um this year, in our district, we have ninety-nine students. Um that would take the OWLPA this year, and we also have four students that are pending the OWLPS assessment, and that would determine if they would qualify. Um as EL students for this school year. Um it's also possible that we have students move in throughout the year. Um so last year, all of our students um that qualified for EL services received push-in and pull-out services from EL paraprofessional. And/or a title lead teacher. Um we also used Lexia Learning to support all of our EL students. That's like an online platform that. All of our EL students have access to. Um we do have access to several interpreter ser- services for families, so that supports families coming in for meetings, parent-teacher conferences. Um potential IEP meetings, family engagement opportunities within the district. Um and all of our K-three students can also receive a Chromebook from IT so that they have access to Lexia at home. Um our older students already have their Chromebooks that they can take home with them, but for our younger students, they are able to get one to take home, so they have access to that. Um and we utilize translation for testing when allowable. So when students are taking an assessment, um that's looking at their. Ability to read or write in English, we cannot use translation. But for example, if a student is taking like NWA in math, um translation is allowable for that assessment. Um this year, in addition to continuing all of those services from last year, um we are using Avid Emerge at middle schools, which. Um is language acquisition instruction, so it's really weaving in reading, writing, speaking, and listening to all facets of students. Um education to accelerate their language development. We are piloting pocket talks for students. Um the pocket talk is a really unique device that translates in real time for students um in verbal language. So it translates into their home language, and that's really great when students are working in small groups. It allows them to fully participate with their peers. Um we are looking at training for title leads and EL professionals on Lexia Learning so that they are using it um to maximize its effectiveness with students. Um we also have training at the ESC in Independence for our title leads to support ELL students. And then um Mrs. Ray in the in um CNI department. Is working with our Cleveland Heights University Heights Family Engagement Department, as well as Immigration Connections to provide supports to our families.
Do teachers receive any type of professional development for working with English language learners?
So our EL paras and our title leads do receive some professional developments, but our. Typical classroom teachers have not received that in the past. Um but the the EL para-professionals that are service providing services to those students and our title teachers that are providing services to them. Do receive some of that training.
That might be something to explore, um just so um. They are uh have the knowledge on how to encourage those students as opposed to um. Discouraging them. Um. I just have a a firsthand student account of a student who seems to be an English language learner. And the other students in the classroom um weren't really appreciative of. They felt the teacher was kind of targeting the student. And I'm sure it was in good faith from the teacher just to get the student to talk more, but um it didn't feel that way.
That's interesting because um I was trying to pull up our student, our per- our number of students of English learners last year compared to this year, just so we.
I was curious about that.
Um so I wanna get that back to you. I know at the high school this year. Um there is a seminar class that was established for students that are not English learners. Um most are Spanish-speaking. Um but we have uh students from multiple backgrounds. I remember in the spring, I met a group of like five new students in the high school. They were all with Ms. Scully. One was from Turkey, one student was from Haiti, another student was from Zambia. Um I believe two students from Mexico. So it was, I mean, really diverse. Um and so to your question, um I'm I'm very glad that the team is really starting to think about how we build this. Um but we are, as we become more diverse from an English learner population, we're gonna have to build out more structures and supports. Um for students and teachers because, you know, this, our district hasn't. Um had the numbers where you have like a structured approach, EL E- English learner uh support program. There are a lot of different models, but. We are becoming that, and so we will need to have those those embedded um within curriculum instruction in the in the schools.
We are becoming that again. We were, we've been that in the past. When I was, when I was young, um we were a real destination district for Eastern European immigrants. And so um there was, there were quite a few. Um and they were in pockets. But certainly Coventry Elementary School was was full of fresh Eastern European immigrants. And it was um, it was, it was a really cool experience.
I was wondering how many languages for English language. So you'll get us that number?
Yeah, we can get that number for you.
Uh a question that I have, uh so my my daughter went to Noble. Um and at at the time, especially when in her younger years, um Noble had a a a pretty sizable Nepali. Population of families. Uh uh so, you know, it's it's the, it's not just the student in the classroom, it's the family at home. Uh we would get robo-calls uh back-to-back because we get the Nepali one right after the English one uh for a couple of years. Um and so, so I'm also interested in, this is, you don't have to have it now, but uh what supports we're providing. To the the whole family experience to keep the family engaged beyond the student sitting in the classroom.
Yes, and that's um Mrs. Ray has been working with Lisa Hunt for Family Engagement to. Kind of really exactly what you're talking about, looking at how are we communicating to families? How are we ensuring that they're getting the information they need? And then when they do come to our schools for family events or conferences or things like that, how are we providing them with the supports they need to fully engage in those experiences? Um so I can l- talk to them to get some additional like details on exactly what that looks like, um but that is something that we've started to talk about.
And then getting back to like the consistency thing of like school to school, like, you know, it would be. Ideal for us to be providing a consistent experience from, especially at the elementary school level, from building to building. So that we're bringing all those families along together.
Just like the curriculum?
Thank you. And so with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Swaggard for college and career.
It's like, haven't I had enough?
Well, I think you helped me cover most of the information already. So I'll just try to hit some of the highlights, just to go into a little bit more context, but. Um really, when we think about this goal around college and career readiness, we know that there's a a big component of monitoring and increasing the two. And four-year college enrollment and persistence rate. So it's not just about getting students to go in the fall. Um or say they're gonna go in the fall, but then actually persist to um degree completion. That's really where we want this this measure to go. Um so when we think about it, uh class of twenty twenty-three, which is our latest group. Um right now, and this is based on the August twenty twenty-four report from the National Student Clearinghouse. Is we managed to get up to fifty-five percent enrolled in post-secondary education within one year after high school graduation. Um now, if you remember earlier, um probably last year, when I came to talk to you, we were at like forty-nine percent. So when you think about like the efforts of that gear-up cohort, we got six additional percent of students um to enroll in some point. Um during that year out of high school. And that's, I think, a pretty significant measure, uh a significant increase when you start thinking about. You know, some students just, it's hard to get the wheels moving again after high school graduation, so the fall doesn't necessarily work. But with an additional outreach effort that um we're able to get them enrolled in the spring semester or the summer semester. So it's really encouraging when we think about what does that um continued, ongoing outreach look like? And how it actually produced a pretty significant jump from where we ended with the twenty twenty-three cohort. Um as they graduated high school. Um and then when we think about that, we also wanna keep track of persistence rates. So when we look at the twenty twenty-two class. Um we saw that fifty percent of graduates enrolled. Um and then we saw seventy-seven percent of that group persisting from their freshman to their sophomore year, which. Again, is a pretty large number. Uh we wanna see that number of, you know, seventy-seven continue. Um I think that that beats the the national average for persistence rates um versus. Really, the number we wanna see increases. We want more than fifty percent of our graduates to enroll. And then we wanna keep the seventy-seven percent of students moving from year one of college into year two of college. Uh which te- typically um shows a pretty dramatic drop um when you look at some of the college-going and persistence data. So there is some, there's some good news in that that measure. So what we plan to do for twenty-four and twenty-five is obviously we've got two gear-up cohorts at our high school right now. That's our ninth graders and our tenth graders. And some of that is just making sure that our ninth and tenth graders understand that there are some dips in trends. Um just talking to them about, you know, that you're up against some 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 big influences. Um when you, we look at the typical experience that students have when they get ready to graduate and they start into college. And one, I think, is just letting families and students know that there is this dip that typically exists. And how to combat that, how to prepare yourself mentally um for that or financially for that. Um so a lot of that is just continuing to do some of our workshops with students and families, helping them really make that. Solid plan. And then even as things start to shift for students, that the plan doesn't get thrown out. Like that we really have a plan, we're we're working through the plan, so we're able to adapt and move and be nimble around it and continue, even if it does mean something like. We, we're not gonna drop out, we might pause, we might take um one credit, but that's not necessarily. Going to stop us from being successful. So a lot of this is just helping parents and students um. And families understand that there's a lot that goes into the persistence idea, and it usually starts with a really um concrete plan. Uh one of the action steps that we're also working on that um backs up even a little bit beyond the high school is. I think that getting students and families to talk about their plan is a really important piece. Um even right, so um so much so, like this is National Gear Up Week, and even though we've got our gear-up cohorts. Trying to have that conversation in all of our schools and all of the different settings, even at kindergarten family night. Uh where students and families might even get to put that and plant that seed, so that way, ten years later, they're able to, you know, that. That seed has turned into something. Uh so it's really important for us to continue that follow-up work. Um our twenty twenty-three gear-up cohorts, um the, we're supposed to be at the end of the grant right now, here at September thirtieth. Uh we have applied with the Federal um Department of Education for a no-cost extension, so we're able to utilize some of those um. Those funds that we haven't used yet in order to continue to serve students in the twenty twenty-three cohort if they haven't finished their first year of college. So that would continue that outreach. So, you know, we're kinda at that fifty-five percent. So we're still looking for forty-five percent of that graduating class and get them into programs, get them um, you know, connected with some of our um local colleges. Um and then we think about that providing um support for college FASFA completion for the twenty twenty-five cohort, so. We've already started bringing in colleges to do um visits and presentations into the high schools, so that way, we're trying to orient students to that. Uh we've got the financial aid nights that we plan, so at least one thing um each month um moving into the FASFA season. Uh really, the big push around the FSAID creation right now, uh and just trying to get that word out, um like, you know, Ms. Crenshaw had. Um articulated so well, is that FASFA is more than just like this single dimension. So it's really important for you to access all different types of aid, so we really wanna help um amplify that message.
Can I say one thing about gear-up just before you go on? Because um we recently found out, and uh just a very quick story. Um we received like a notice from gear-up headquarters. I don't know who does it.
Also known as Federal Department.
You know, with the invitation to apply for for another round of grant funding, and so Bob. Suggested that we go to the ESC and have them do um a broad grant. So that more districts could benefit from gear-up. That way, we could get the supports, but also other schools. We got the grant. So now there are seven other districts around us that are gonna benefit from Bob's idea, and I just wanna say this because. When we went to them, they were like, what's gear-up, right? You know? Um and so now we, there are seven other districts around us who are gonna benefit from the gear-up supports. We will have additional cohorts. We don't know exactly which ones yet. Coming through the district that will benefit, but I just have to publicly thank Bob. You could have just been greedy and said, let's just do it ourselves. You know, we, you know, we've been successful, so likely would have been successful, but to. Um now, we're successful, but other districts and other students in Cuyahoga County are gonna benefit. From the gear-up supports. It is huge. I just wanna thank you for that.
There's also, yes, congratulations. There is also a gear-up scholarship that is available for students in the state of Ohio. Um so that might be a, an incentive, you know, to keep them going.
Definitely. We love connecting them to any of those those available funding sources, right?
Yeah, I think we had a class of twenty twenty-three gear-up scholarship winner.
Can I ask a question? Do we um, do we track? Kids who do AP and CCP work and their college enrollment numbers versus kids who didn't? And um same thing goes for CTE participation and employment?
Yeah. So the National Student Clearinghouse Report will give us um student-specific data. So then we would just need to backwards map that to the different programs that students participated in. Um I do think that that's part of our goal of even increasing the associate pathway, where students are having access and. We know um which students started on that path to earn an associate's degree before they graduate high school. associate's degree before they graduate high school. But I think that opens the door for some of that data tracking and the other similar programs. Because it is interesting when you think about like the AP, like I'll talk about that at one of the, the upcoming slides, just about like where students are in AP compared to previous years. But it is, you know, it's really inspiring when we see that some of the students are really performing at high levels. And so how does that turn into that persistence rate of two, four, six-year completion of degree? Like, that's the piece that we really want to see come full circle. And not because we don't think that there's other options for students, I mean, a high, a high earning wage is a high earning wage, and some of it requires a degree and some of it doesn't require a degree. And some of our students that could access a degree choose to go earn a higher earned wage and, you know, do that too. Those are all viable pathways. But I do think that that idea of like kind of keeping an idea and see if we can use some predictive data points to see if that plays out with the persistence rates.
I'd be really curious about that.
So when we think about the, the four and five year, I think we talked about it previously, we really want to keep track of both of those rates, and we know that that beget, that becomes a weighted grade on our district report card. So it's something why we want to just continue to increase it, and we really want that number to be close to 100%. And it might even mean some things we want to look at earlier indication, especially around students that may have dropped out, and we really need to do some follow-ups. So again, I know there's social workers at the high school that are doing an amazing job with this, they really have a, they're almost like private detectives, private eyes, trying to find students through any means possible. But there are some people and the administrators that are also working at the high school do an amazing job of knowing each and every student in their cohort, which also helps with this cohort tracking. So really understanding who are the seniors, who are the juniors, getting to know those families. Already talked about Ms. Perry, knowing all of her gear up students, and Ms. Thomas too. I know that she has just inherited a gear up cohort, but even tomorrow night, we're having our first gear up 2027 family night as a way to try to make sure that we're really connecting the dots with the students and families in those cohorts. So a lot of it goes back to the relationship piece. We've got to know our students, we've got to know where they're headed and move forward with that. So I'm giving Karen Liddell Anderson an opportunity to talk about the special populations.
Hope my voice pulls out, it'll be a little bit heavy, but that's okay. The focus here in goal one with special populations is looking at your students with a disability and basically monitoring indicators on the special education profile, and which is, some people refer to as the special education report card. What the profile really is, is that IDEA established a series of indicators that monitor, that they, that they monitor, and they're looking at progress that students make as it relates to services and outcomes with these particular indicators. There are 46 indicators that are rated, we met 24 of those indicators, but in addition to the 24 that we met, there were 14 indicators that we demonstrated growth from the previous year, which was measurable progress from the previous school year. Of the 24 indicators that we met, there are six indicators which are considered as priority indicators, and they're considered as priority indicators because they focus on gap closing as it relates to students with a disability. Of those six priority indicators, we met five of those indicators additionally. With those indicators, a look at, they're actually looking at the performance of a student with a disability on state assessments as compared to their non-disabled peers. And I'm not sure if people know how massively significant that is, that you may be a student with a disability and you are, I'm not saying competing with an individual who does not have a disability, but you're being compared to. So the expectation from the state is, even though you may have a student with a disability, you may have accommodations and modifications, their expectation is that you perform at the same rate as your non-disabled peers. And the fact that we met five of those six indicators in terms of closing that gap is huge. So, and you'll see those, those indicators are there on the link. In terms of how we're going to be supporting this work or continue to support this work moving forward, most, much of our work is kind of like regulated as it's, we're collaborating with our ESC. So a lot of our work in terms of trainings that we do go through our ESC in terms of, you know, they're saying, yes, this, this training is fine, or yes, you're going to be doing this particular type of training in this particular area. So what we're looking at, we're doing IEP compliance training, we're also doing co-teaching training, and then this year, we're going to be developing sort of like a, I guess for lack of better, like a site where we house all of our training on our district site. Because again, it's one thing to go to a training, and I mean, I've gone to many trainings, and then I leave there and I have thoughts and questions and ideas. And if I could go back and look at that training, okay, there it is. It'll also be a nice tool that we can refer individuals to, so if somebody has a need, we can, you know, definitely say, hey, even with the principal who may say, hey, I have a staff person who has a question or a need here, hey, here's a resource that you can access. Then also, something else that we do to support the work, we do internal IEP compliance, kind of like monitoring, where we have a rubric where we just kind of randomly select, and this comes from a longstanding practice through the ESC and the state that they've asked us to do, and many districts do it, and you just randomly select IEPs, take it through the rubric, and that way you can say, hey, how are we doing? And it mirrors what the state does, when they come in and they do an onsite review, it's a random review. So they'll randomly select, so we're mirroring what they do in terms of every year, and this goes on monthly, so. Okay? So with that, and then for goal two, I'm going to get up, my next person who will be sitting here speaking, so I believe we'll end up next and then Mr. Rincino.
Okay, thank you. That concludes our update on goal one, so we're going to turn our attention to goal two, educational approach. This goal focuses on equity, empowerment, and opportunities, and of course, we all know these are crucial components for fostering an inclusive and supportive and learning environment for all students. In this section, we're going to examine our current initiatives, assess their effectiveness, and identify areas of growth as we strive to ensure that every student has access to the resources and support they need to thrive. And we're going to turn it over to Mrs. Zapotekne for curriculum instruction update on goal two.
Okay. So our first component for this is providing professional learning for staff on tier-one instructional core. And so last year, our professional learning focused on applying the 13 elements of explicit instruction to our high-quality instructional materials, professional learning for the implementation of our ELA and math high-quality instructional materials, training on our math high-quality instructional materials for tier-two at the elementary level, and professional learning on the science of reading for intervention specialists in grades six through 12. This year, we will continue, as we mentioned previously, professional learning for the implementation of our newly adopted math curriculum, which we have begun and will continue for the rest of the year. One of the things that we are very excited about this year is our clarity for learning cohort, and so we actually just had the first session of that today, and we'll have the second session tomorrow. We do have over 70 teachers that signed up to be part of this clarity cohort, it is on a voluntary basis, and so we had half of them attend today and half will attend tomorrow. And when we talk about clarity for learning, we're really talking about teachers identifying a learning intention, like an overarching learning intention that they want students to be successful with, breaking down and chunking out what are the specific success criteria, like what are the different parts that students need to be able to do and understand and accomplish to meet that overarching learning intention, and then sharing that with students. So today in our examples, our presenter shared with us a video of a kindergartner who was able to articulate on a learning continuum for writing, well, this person's in the beginning, and this is what they did, and this is what they need to work on, and I'm right here on step nine, and this is what I did, and this is what I need to work on, and this is what I need to do to get to step 10. So it's really encouraging students to take ownership and agency of their learning, understanding where they are, where they need to go, and how they can get there. And so the, the three questions that we're focusing on right now with clarity for learning is for our students to be able to articulate, what am I learning, why am I learning it, and how do I know that I've learned it? And so we have taken some trips to Boise, Idaho, where they are in their third year of implementation with the clarity cohort, and the consistency between their schools and what their students are able to do, being exposed to this for three years on a consistent basis really was inspiring. So I'm so excited to see where that can take us, and just the engagement that we saw from our teachers today who participate in the, in this was very encouraging, so we're very excited about that. Additionally, we have student-centered coaching, professional learning for our learning coaches and principals to start the work of the coaching cycles. So student-centered coaching is our learning coaches partnering with teachers through coaching cycles where they would work with the teacher to identify a learning target that's focused on student growth. So looking at the teacher's data, what is one thing they want to focus on together? They would work together to co-plan lessons, and the coach would go into the classroom and co-teach with the teacher. They would be using formative assessments throughout the teaching to determine how students are responding, and then there would be a post-assessment at the end to determine how the coaches' work with the teacher impacted the learning of students in the classroom. And so that's directly connected to our clarity work, so all of our learning coaches are attending the clarity cohort, they would be working with teachers to develop those learning intentions and success criteria for students. We are partnering with Diane Sweetie, and she's coming out October 1st and 2nd for our first sessions with that training, but we have been meeting with our coaches one to two times a week since the beginning of the year to kind of get them jump-started and ready for this work. And then we will continue to support collaborative practices and the use of high-quality instructional materials during our grade-level team meetings. And so we meet with our elementary teachers four times throughout the year for a half-day for each of those sessions, and then at our middle schools, we meet with each grade-level content area once each semester, and it's the same for high school once each semester. And then we'll continue to provide professional learning for staff on using technology to effectively support instruction. So last year, there were some smart panel training for elementary teachers, and our building-based tech coaches supported instructional technology with a focus on GoGuardian. This year, we're continuing to utilize our tech coaches to support instructional technology. They had several office hours that were available at the beginning of the year where teachers could come, receive support, especially as they're getting, like, all of their technology in Google classrooms and all of those things set up for the start of the year. We also have Zern and Waggle, those are some of our online platforms that we're using. Zern provides support with core math instruction, and Waggle provides more of an individual pathway for intervention. And then for our middle school science department, we will have access hopefully by the end of the week to Brain Pop Science, which supports the development of critical thinking and reasoning, and it also integrates a lot of writing into the science classroom, and that's something that our science teachers were very excited about. So that's a new resource that we will have for them. So, yeah, we're really excited to see the results of some of these things we have in place this year. And with that, I'm going to turn it back to Bob.
Real, real quick one, sorry. Who are these learning coaches?
So we have seven learning coaches in our district. The high school has one learning coach, both of our middle schools have a learning coach, and then in the elementaries, we have, each learning coach is with two buildings, because the elementaries are a little bit smaller. And so most of them were learning coaches last year in the district, I believe they were referred to more as instructional coaches. This year, we just shifted the language because we really want these cycles to focus on student learning rather than really focusing on like the teacher's instruction, we want to look and focus on the student learning, and do we have evidence that students are learning as a result of the work that the adults are doing?
Great, thank you.
All right, when we think about goal two and the college and career readiness, there are some components that we like to take a look at specifically around AP, CCP, CTE performance. So just to share a little bit of the good news around the AP participation and achievement, there's definitely some things that are worth noting in this, yeah, huge accomplishments from our students. Just thinking about the total number of students that are taking one or more AP exam in 22, or I'm sorry, 23, 24, we have 313 students taking one or more exam. We had 569 exams scored, so the difference between that is many students took multiple AP exams. We had 158 AP students with scores of three plus, which actually is the highest that we have had in, you know, the seven years that we've been really thinking about this, or eight years that we've been keeping some of that data. And then we've got 50% of our students that scored a three or better on their AP exam. So we're definitely trending with students taking really rigorous courses and also performing really well in that, and so we want to celebrate that. We'd also like to take a look at the second slide here, which is around their performance summary. When we think about the 23, 24 school year, we have 35 AP scholars, that actually ties where we were in 1920, which is always nice to get back to something pre-pandemic, see some of those levels there. When we look at the AP scholar with distinction, last year we had 23 students earn that, that rating from AP based on their participation in the exams. We have 69 total AP scholars, which is again, a new high for us here in CHUH, which represents 22% of all AP test takers. So lots of tremendous performance by the students. One, just increasing the number of students that are participating in AP, which does go back to some of the work that, you know, took place at the high school pre-pandemic with our equal opportunity schools. What does it look like to think about the supports that students would receive? I know even Toya's back here too, talking about like some of the professional development that has gone on with all teachers, including AP teachers, around how can we provide supports to make those inclusive environments more attractive to all of the students at high tide, not just certain segments of the population. So I think that this is kind of hitting on multiple levels of not only just increased participation, but then increased performance for students in AP. And we can see something very similar when we look at the number of students participating in the CTE. The CTE program numbers are up, we'll continue to talk and monitor those as we move through this school year. And I know last year I came and talked to you about the College Credit Plus Associate Pathway, where we had 29 ninth graders start that program. This year, we're up to 56 ninth graders starting that program. So again, we're seeing our students just trend in this really dynamic environment, and I think it's really exciting for us to see students taking, students and families taking advantage of the opportunities to really earn college credit, you know, take rigorous courses, and then also have lots of achievement. So when we think about our, our action steps for this school year is, one, all of this happens when we monitor and support the students enrolled in these different programs. There's been a tremendous effort to increase enrollment in CTE programs over the last few years, and a lot of that starts with things like making sure that all the middle school students get a chance to see those programs well in advance of even becoming a high school student. We've been able to do that through some of our gear up efforts and our gear up programming for those cohorts, but we want to make sure that we continue that. So even as that gear up program is now at ninth and 10th grade, that we've got those early exposures for students in the seventh and eighth grade. We also know that students that experience tutoring and writing lab support continue to be, you know, very, their achievement seems to be very positive. We know that even just students accessing the writing centers through Tri-C as a college credit plus student is something that we're really trying to make sure students know that they have access to those services, so when things do get complicated, they've got lots of opportunities for support that extend beyond the high school. When we think about the, monitoring the number of students with the viable post-secondary plan, last year I came and talked to you about that PACE framework and Pathway OS, that's an initiative from the Greater Cleveland Career Consortium, or the GCCC. We continue our implementation of the PACE framework with, you know, a renewed emphasis. So there is always that opportunity to connect with local businesses. It was really exciting to hear earlier in the first part of the meeting today for Rodney to Ryan, I'm sorry, Ryan, to reach out and say, yes, we'd love to connect. And that's also part of how we want the PACE framework to be working with multiple career exposures for students, really trying to develop that post-secondary plan. This year, you'll hear me talk about tracking student participation and activities and engagements through the vector pathway system. So essentially, that's just a rebranded version of Pathway OS, or even two years ago, it was called Transio. So obviously, it's very popular in the, the for-profit world because everybody just keeps rebranding it. So we'll just kind of try to keep track of it, but ultimately, it's a way for students to engage with employers and employment opportunities. So at the end of the day, we just want more of our kids to be able to access those opportunities. Even tomorrow, we're taking a group of students from the high school over to the Ahuja College and Career Medical Fair, so this is after school, 4:30 till 6:00 PM, but then we'll track that through the pathway, vector pathways program, so that way we can see which students participated, and then how we can create some other engagements for students that didn't get a chance to participate this go-around. All right, Dr. Lucy Tyre, is it you? Oh, I'm sorry, goes back to Rachel, I'm sorry, sorry.
No, you're okay.
No, you're okay.
Thank you. Lisa Hunt unfortunately could not be with us this evening, so I'm going to present her slide. If you have any questions, I will take them down and get them to Lisa tomorrow. So, this is about our integration of equity in our district. Last year, for equity, we held an equity retreat for our building and district leaders. We also reviewed our equity non-negotiables. And we were taking steps to move from the focus on equity to look at equity from a systematic approach towards our teaching and learning procedures. This year, we are continuing our equity professional development for our building and district staff. We are reviewing and creating district and school equity non-negotiables. We're focusing on equity from a systematic approach, which I've already said, toward teaching and learning. So, we will continue that work. We are reconvening the Equity Committee. We are no longer a task force. That's when we first started. Now, we're going back to our monthly committee meetings. And we're going to ground new staff in the Integrated Comprehensive System, ICS for Equity Training. So, our new staff members typically, we do a new training for all, we do an equity training for all staff members, new staff members for an identity. We typically don't double back and pick up the equity work. But we are doing that this year because of ICS. We want to make sure that our new staff members are up to date with our equity training in modules one through six. So, that would be the work for this year. Thank you. And I'm going to now turn it over to Dr. Abduzatar.
Hello, hello.
Hello.
So, for the social-emotional learning and academic supports department, one of our action steps that we're focused on the last few years is to ensure fidelity in the multi-tier system of support structure. So, it's been a structure we've been building year by year and we've added on pieces and parts every year. Last year, we focused on just revising the handbook to include any updates. It was a rollout. We started with just ELA supports, then we added on math. This year, we also tacked on the behavioral supports that I'll talk about a little bit more for the 24, 25 structures. We wanted to, last year, we focused on continuing training to teams on the MTSS process. Because it was newer, we really wanted to make sure that all the roles were identified as well as what is the process and structure. So, that was our main focus. And just getting to the nitty-gritty of, let's make sure that we're having the meetings, that we're talking about the students and the needs of the students, and that we're able to provide some form of intervention if that's what they need. And then, we supported teams as they implemented the MTSS in their schools. So, myself, Jim Bennett, who is the Instructional Support Specialist that works with the MTSS process, and Rachel Coleman, the principal, when she was Principal Leadership, we went to schools when they had their MTSS meetings. And we were able to just provide feedback, also offer support, as well as kind of coach them through that process. For this year, we want to incorporate more of the EduClimber platform in our MTSS process. So, we purchased EduClimber last year and EduClimber is the platform that we use to collect student data for, we look at student data holistically. So, we look at attendance, behavior. We have grades, but then we also have assessment results in there so that when we're meeting for the MTSS process, we're looking at the whole student. We're able to see a bigger picture of what they're able to do and where the needs are. So, we're able to then intervene appropriately. So, last year, we were able to kind of play around with the system and we had a couple of pilot schools entitled Teachers Work With That Platform. This year, the teachers will be utilizing that platform to document and capture our interventions for our students. So, if a student receives an intervention, now we will have that documented proof as far as how they're doing and any next steps that we need to take. We also focus this year on, or will focus this year on modifying and tweaking our MTSS agenda and protocols. At the end of last year, teachers took a survey and school administrators took a survey to let us know how the process went, any feedback that they had on the forms, what they felt they could benefit from. And we took all of that feedback and we incorporated it into new forms and protocols, or tweaking the forms and protocols so that it really helps them to really focus on the data when they're in the meetings and focus on the interventions that they need to provide to students. We also created an MTSS resource document. Right now, we have the MTSS handbook, which is, I don't know, maybe 100 pages or so. So, it could be difficult to find information. So, with the MTSS resource document, it's just one, a one-pager with links. So, if you need to know how to log into EduClimber, you just click on a link. If you need to know how to document an intervention, you click on that link. Or if you just need to know who, what are the roles, you can click on that link. So, that is located on our CHUH website. And then, our other focus is just to continue to support teams at all levels with the main thing of making sure that interventions are being provided and happening on a consistent basis. Our next action step is for counselors and social workers to collaborate to develop our trauma-informed action plans. So, the trauma-informed action plans are plans where we take best practices to support students who have experienced trauma. And we create plans that focus on students' action steps, focus on parents' action steps, as well as the school action steps. So, for example, a trauma-informed action plan for a student could be to look at students who have a certain anxiety level and provide certain supports or groups for those students. A plan for parents could be to provide information or, on a regular, consistent basis, our high school has a Google website that they developed so that parents can go to that website to be able to get information on how to support their students who have experienced trauma. And then, a staff action plan could be to develop a self-care room or to be able to provide structured professional development on trauma. So, the high school social workers at the beginning of the year, they offered PD to teachers in which they talked about trauma, how to know students have experienced trauma, how to identify that, and then what are some strategies that they can use in their classrooms. So, they were able to provide that professional development to teachers as well as make sure that teachers walked away from that with some self-care items such as fidget sticks. I think they had lotion, smelly lotion, so that they're able to get through their days. So, that's our trauma-informed action plan. So, last year, we just looked at those plans and we wanted to make sure that we were able to just kind of keep our eye on the plans, how the adult implementation went and how the student engagement and the parent engagement went with those plans. For this year, we'll continue to review those plans to just make sure that they're happening with fidelity as well as using data to support decisions and next steps with the schools. So, all of their trauma-informed action plan goals are aligned to their, either their BLAP goals or their student behavior goals. And then, we also wanted to make sure that we develop tools to monitor and evaluate the effectiveness of the trauma-informed action plans. So, we plan on collecting student data outcomes as well as conducting surveys to continue to attract that progress. And then, finally, we've, we're working on our social-emotional learning curriculum. So, last year, we had a selection team that met to review various curriculum. We looked at maybe four or five curriculum tools that we could use for our SCL curriculum. And then, we were able to vet those tools through a process through Castle. And Castle is one of the big gurus of social-emotional learning and they have a template that you can use in order to make sure that whatever curriculum you select meet a certain criteria. So, we were able to meet as a team, look at those curriculum. We had the vendors come and talk to us. And we ranked Character Strong as meeting all of that criteria. And so, Character Strong was selected last year along with our screener that we will be using, which is also aligned to Character Strong. So, this year, we developed an implementation plan. We shared that with teachers and we began our Character Strong Tier One training. Two counselors, social workers, school psychologists, and some intervention specialists participated in that training in August, as well as middle school teachers. So, the implementation plan involves, at the elementary level, counselors providing Tier One instruction with the teacher supporting in the classroom. At the middle school level, middle school teachers are providing that Character Strong instruction. And then, we are, our next step is moving into the high school. We just rolled out, I didn't put it on here, but we did just roll out our screener this week. So, with the screener, the screen, once the students take the screener, it will identify some key needs. And then, we're able to then kind of group students and see what particular needs that they have in order to provide support to them. And then, I think I talked about the first wave, but I do have, so, RAND, which is a, RAND, they take, they do surveys and they do research across the country. So, recent findings just came out from a study that was done that looked at Castle's National Nationwide Policy Scan and an American Teacher Panel and American School Leaders Panel Survey. And they basically looked to see how is the implementation of social-emotional learning going across the country. And some of the key findings that I wanted to just note here is that more schools across the United States are incorporating SCL into students' educational experiences. And nearly all US states have policies that support SCL in schools. And then, another finding that was noted was that about 83% of schools report that they're using SCL, which is up from 76% in the 21 and 22 school years. So, more and more schools are using SCL curriculum. More and more schools are noting that students' social-emotional learning is important as well as adults' social-emotional learning.
Can you talk a little bit more about, I think you called it a safe room? Did you? Or did I?
So, the, well, there is two rooms. I don't think I, I might have called it.
A self-care room.
Self-care room, self-care room.
What's that look like? So, in my mind, I, I've seen some high schools that have those type of rooms and maybe they offer like yoga to students or opportunities for students just to meditate or, you know, it's sound, you hear sounds of water and birds chirping. Is, is that what you had in mind, something?
That's exactly what they had in mind. So, it was two folds. So, in their plan that they have for the teachers, or the staff, I should say, the staff. For the staff, they do have the accommodations to make a staff support room. So, that's the dim lights, you know, soft music, maybe aromatherapy, as well as some literature about, you know, relaxing, taking care of yourself, that kind of thing. They also, for the student side, they also want to develop a student's safe room or a student calm room. And it's something where it could have just relaxing space, just something quiet, just in case students want to get away from, you know, something that may be a little bit too stimulating.
And I will pass it to, I think, Lindsay.
Good evening.
Good evening, Ms. Bar.
My name is Lindsay Bar. I am one of the Student Service Coordinators here in the district. And I support our students' families and staff in grades six through 12. And I am here to talk to you about the implementation of our co-teaching. Before I go through the slide, I just think it's important to put all of this into context. Karen Liddell Anderson spoke about the special education profile. One of the data points on there is the least restrictive environment. So, the amount of time that our students with disabilities are spending within that general education setting. And one of those data points has us look at students spending 80% or more of their day in the general education setting. So, how are we doing that here? What does it look like in CHUH? We want to make sure that we're providing a full continuum of services in grades, really preschool through 12th grade. So, within the least restrictive environment work, right now, we're hovering around 58% of our students that are receiving their services in that general education setting, primarily through this co-teaching implementation. The target is 64%. So, each year, they go up a little, but we are also trending in the right direction. With that being said, when we talk about the co-plan, co-serv, co-learn, the C3 teams, that ties into the equity work with ICS. So, we wanted to start having that language shift. So, we were all using the same language. Amanda also talked about the coaching model, coming in and co-teaching. Toya has implemented co-teaching within the gifted services. So, really, we want to make sure that we're connecting all of our work together and we're not over here in a silo. So, with that being said, we are continuing on, you'll see, carryover. We are doing good work. So, let's stick with it, have high fidelity, have impactful trainings, and pushing forward so that we can continue to meet our goals. So, this school year, we started the year with a refresher IEP compliance training that was also recorded and provided to our staff. So, we will make sure to include that on our website when it is up and running. The new staff IEP compliance training also focused on using the electronic tools that we house our documents in. So, it was a deeper dive. We really want to make sure that our IEPs are standards-based. So, our training was tweaked this year to incorporate more of a standards-based IEP model because we want to make sure that now we have our students within that general education setting being exposed to the Tier One instruction at grade-level content. So, from there, on the IEP compliance calibration, Karen mentioned that briefly. They are monthly calibration meetings. And Paul and I both run different groups. He works with the elementary levels. I'm working with the secondary levels. And we also incorporate our related service providers. So, our speech and language pathologists, occupational therapists, they're part of those teams as well. With the new team co-teaching, so any new teams throughout the district, kindergarten through 12th grade, they are provided with a new team co-teaching. So, that just reviews the five different models, talking about the biggest impact. How does it look throughout your school day? Through that training, they also have time for collaboration and planning. Give a shout-out to Dr. Walker at Fairfax. She went above and beyond before the school year started. I came and met with her second and fourth grade teams and just, they are really making headway there. And then, that's offered throughout the school year as well. So, if teachers want to reach out and have specific questions, or if building principals need some support, we offer it through that model as well. PD planning in collaboration with the ESC. Ms. Liddell Anderson already spoke about that. So, based on our plans and what the state says we have to do, we work collaboratively with the ESC to develop those trainings. And then, last but not least, just the co-teaching strategies and critical thinking lessons at elementary and middle school levels for gifted that Toya has been working with her, her group on. That's it for me.
Thank you.
So, thank you. All right. Well, I guess it's time to talk about some positive behavioral supports. All right. Well, thank you for having me tonight to talk to you about PBIS in Cleveland Heights University High School District. And just, you know, a reminder to the board and everybody that's watching that, you know, four of our buildings received PBIS Bronze Recognition from the Ohio PBIS Network. They are Roxborough Elementary, Noble Elementary, Garrity Elementary, and Monticello Middle School in years past. And all of our buildings did apply for recognition last year. And we're hoping that we'll hear something on whether or not they're recognized for PBIS implementation sometime in October. So, you know, just kudos to all the buildings that received Bronze Recognition and their hard work and efforts for the implementation. And it's really building the capacity to implement at a high fidelity rate. The other piece of PBIS is that you'll see some carryover from the previous year to now because, you know, things are working, you know? We're still, we've measured the fidelity of implementation of PBIS with the tiered fidelity inventory in the past. We're going to continue to do that. We have some strong traction there. With the implementation of PBIS, you know, you want to think about it as a marathon and not a sprint. Okay? And we've been implementing PBIS across the district for a long time, all right? But there's a focused effort to improve the implementation of it across the district to have, you know, positive outcomes for students being in, in class with, in front of their teachers. With that, you know, buildings have different needs on this marathon that they're taking. So, we are leveraging the state support team originally to. so we are leveraging the state support team originally to provide tiered PBIS training to our buildings. Our building administration are, have a menu of professional development options for universal tiered PBIS training, targeted PBIS training, and, you know, tier-three intensive PBIS training across the district. So excited that we're leveraging that type of professional development opportunities as well. The other piece of it is, is we've historically done the PBIS Self-Assessment Survey. That usually occurs in May of each school year. It's about a 20-minute survey that all staff participate in, and it measures the implementation of the four subsystems of PBIS according to staff perception. It's one thing to say, hey, you know, we're doing a great job as a team, and it's another thing for your staff that you're doing the work and you're implementing all these strategies, come out and say, hey, you know what, these are things that you're doing really well, and these are some areas that we consider like a high priority for improvement. So, and that tells our teams, you know, one thing very, that's very important, that is, is where is the staff's priorities and for what the team should be focusing on, how to move the work forward. We've reviewed that over the summer with the building-level leadership teams, BLTs, and our first district PBIS meeting was earlier this month, all right? And we reviewed the PBIS Self-Assessment Survey and the results, so those teams have that data to plan out their next action steps for the 24-25 school year. The PBIS teams will also be sent, for each building, be sending a representative to the state support team to participate in the PBIS coaching sessions. Coaching sessions are on a monthly basis. Those coaching sessions are aligned to our district meetings, so we're talking about, you know, they're hearing it in the morning, and then we're planning for, in the afternoon with our district meetings. And we're just really excited about the implementation of PBIS, support kids, and make CHU a stronger Tiger Nation.
All right, thank you.
I am very excited to see the tiered fidelity inventory at the middle school level post-cellphone policy.
Yeah.
That will be interesting.
Comment, not a question.
So I just wanted to thank everyone for their attention and engagement throughout this presentation. We've covered a lot of information regarding our strategic plan and our progress that we're making towards our goals. I just wanted to take a minute to extend my gratitude to everyone who contributed to this session, especially to our presenters for the valuable insights and hard work. They put a lot of time and energy into this, and we want to make sure everyone's well-informed and have an opportunity to discuss the work ahead of us. At this point, I would like to open it up to any questions or comments you have. Your feedback is crucial as we continue to refine our approach to ensure that we are meeting the needs of our students and community. So with that, are there any questions or comments?
We've been waiting for this. We've been waiting for a chance to ask our question.
All of our, we're so, yeah, we sit on our hands throughout the whole, yeah. I asked mine in, in the flow.
Yeah, I asked mine as well, and, and I'm continuously impressed by the team and the depth and breadth of knowledge that you guys bring to these meetings to, to educate us.
I want to thank everybody for being here. I know we ran late, so I appreciate you hanging in there with us. I have a couple of, not questions, but just comments, some of the things I think will be interesting, and these are around college and career. I know every year, we have a number of kids who get college credit through the classes they take. It'd be nice to see how many college credits our kids have earned in aggregate at the end of the year. And I know we have a couple of interesting programs, like I think it's called the Rising Star Program from Tremco that's starting up, and I would be interested to know how many kids are participating in that, and, and an update on that at some point. I know we don't have that data yet because it's just starting, but all, all good things, especially as we see our kids, you know, they're, they're growing and learning and moving on, and then how they're persisting, just any data we can, we can have, because those are the questions we get in the community.
Yes.
So thank you so much, everyone. Does anyone have any other further comments?
I only have one question. I guess a concern that I've heard from, from parents in regards to our gifted program, if it lacks some equity in it, or if it is, you know, used as a way to keep certain groups of, of students together. I guess I've heard from parents that it kind of appears that way, but it's.
Toya, coordinator's here.
Yeah, do you want to come up, Toya? Dress up, please.
Good evening, thank you.
Hello, Toya.
And may I ask specifically, so we did a gifted root cause, and we're waiting to be able to move forward and bring some of that information to you as a board when the time becomes available, and that was what the gifted root cause was addressing, was underrepresented groups and what that looks like for, for service and identification.
Great.
And that's something we've been working on for years, and not only does Cleveland Heights University Heights have a challenge with identifying and servicing underrepresented groups, the entire state does. And so working together with, with different districts and working across the state to make sure that we're doing the best that we can to make sure our students are serviced and identified.
Do you think, or could it be like the tool that is used to identify? And if, if yes, is there an alternative that can be used?
So the state gives us a list of assessments that can be used, and we're only allowed to use those assessments. So you have ones that are whole group assessments, and then you have assessments where parents or staff or children themselves can turn in for individual referrals. We find that when students are individually tested as opposed to the group, that they do better on the assessments. I mean, who wouldn't? If you're assessing one-on-one, and we specifically use non-verbal assessments, so we can diminish or take away some of the prejudice of verbal assessments, yes. So, so we use the NNA T3 and the Raven purposely for cognitive assessments so that we can look at, at the data and make sure that we're addressing it with our students of color. So yes, we, we are.
Session on that coming up. We have to fit in there, we have a lot of stuff.
There's a lot.
Looking forward to it.
Any other questions for me?
Thank you, Toya.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to, I just want to thank the team. You know, we have lots of new people in new roles, doing new things, and bringing in new opportunities, and you guys are, we are running 100 miles an hour, and you guys are focused and, you know, we're all really working well together, so I'm appreciative of it. Thank you for, you know, allowing me to continue to push you. And, you know, great things to come, so more to come for sure. I have about 12 action items from the questions and the requests, so we will work on those and get these answers back to you. Some are time-sensitive, so the TFIs in the spring, we'll get that, for example, but some we'll work on pulling now.
Right, right.
That's great.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you for allowing us to take you from your families, go home, get some sleep.
All right. Well, on that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Mr. Gainer, will you call the roll?
Ms. Serini?
Yes.
Mr. Trumbury?
Yes.
Ms. Crenshaw?
Yes.
Mr. Heitz?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening, we are adjourned.
Thank you.